All right, it's 6:30 PM. I will call this meeting to order. Who do we have here tonight? We'll start with a roll call of members. Matt Yen and myself present, Susan Wood.
Here.
John Crist.
Here.
Phil Lemmeru.
Here.
Michael Bouchard is excused tonight.
Marla McCann.
Here.
Neil McGyver.
Present.
And alternate Bradford Puffer.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we'll start with a review of the minutes from our meeting from June 19th.
I'm not sure we're voting on anything, but do you want to seat Brad?
Oh, yeah. You think I should do that?
I'm not sure it really matters.
Even if, even for voting on minutes, yeah, if he's here, we should seat him.
Perfect. Brad, uh, would you like to be seated as a voting member tonight?
Yeah, sure.
All right, excellent. We will seat Bradford as a voting member. Thank you very much for the suggestions, gentlemen. Go up in there.
Um, first things first, this is, I am listed as absent, but I was there.
Maybe tardy, but present.
I was a bit tardy, yes. That's true. But I was present.
That's true.
My name does show up later. Also on page three, the third paragraph, full, third full paragraph down, more than halfway down, it says McCann adds a note that the typography of Tenny Mountain, but it should be topography.
Was that a typo?
Potentially.
It's not a topo. It was too flat to be a topo.
Tenny Mountain's typography.
These are getting bad. These have to go into minutes.
What is that?
These have to go into minutes.
Yeah, I think the minute, I think the minutes should reflect the humor that's happening right now.
Humor.
Humor was used throughout.
I will be very disappointed if specific humor was not.
Humor.
Have the zingers in there.
I move we approve the minutes as amended.
Excellent. There's no further discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you very much. The minutes are approved as amended. Joseph, do we have any communications received?
Yeah, there are a few communications. Um, a couple of them are more extensive and at the, at the board's discretion, I can save them for a little bit later or, uh, cover them now, really up to the board. Um, I'll start with the two that aren't the, the really long one that's included in the, in the stack up here. Um, the first one would be an update with regards to, uh, the mid-state downtown cross-access easement, which was, as the board may recall, in 2022, as a condition of approval for a site plan review, uh, for a change of use, what was formerly the Community Guaranteed Savings Bank, then Bank of New Hampshire, uh, was being converted to a medical center with the associated parking next door. As a part of that approval, uh, the planning board placed a condition that the applicant provide a cross-access easement to the town across that upper parking lot, access from Gold Terrace. This was actually a, uh, follow-up or a, a closing out of an item that was a condition of approval back in 2006, which was when Gold Terrace was discontinued. It used to go down to Main Street. Now it stops halfway through. That was abandoned and the property was, was made available for the bank. And then as a sort of way to make up for some of that lost connectivity and as a way to start thinking about potentially, um, some other parking options along that, uh, natural shelf in between Russell Street and Main Street, uh, there was a request made that the town be provided with a cross-access easement. So, uh, come 2022, the planning board put that as a condition. Now, uh, we're, we're more or less there. The applicant has, after, after some, some discussion back and forth, provided the town with text and a plan that meet the town attorney's specifications for an easement. Now, the process would go to the select board, and I, I plan to bring this to them at their next meeting on the 28th, um, to, to make a recommendation that they schedule two public hearings on this because under the RSA, the applicable RSA, um, which is 41 colon 14A, uh, the select board does need to hold two public hearings to consider accepting an easement and first needs the, uh, review by the planning board and conservation commission. The planning board, of course, did review this, uh, previously. The conservation commission has also been made aware and, uh, Ted advised that they, uh, took a look at this and recommended in favor. Uh, so the next step, I'll be suggesting to the select board that they schedule those hearings, um, and that would allow them to accept the easement on behalf of the town, closing out that sort of, we'll call it the, the big outstanding condition there really of the 2022 approval, but also closing out this kind of open item for, for about 19 years. So that'll be, that'll be, uh, good to get that one off the books and, and kind of wrapped up. Obviously, the select board will have discretion after those hearings to make the decision on acceptance, but, um, that certainly was the, the feeling of the planning board at the time in 2022 was recommending that it be, uh, provided to the town. Um, and then the other quick communication, uh, folks in, on the board, folks in the public, zoning board may be aware that there has been some significant work underway on the, uh, Loon Lake Road culvert replacement project, replacing what was a 60-inch corrugated metal pipe culvert with a, uh, let's say a 10-foot, no, I don't remember. Don't quote me on the numbers.
Box culvert.
It's a very large box culvert with open bottom, uh, that basically replicates the natural stream bed underneath, large enough to meet the, uh, hydraulic flow demands through that, which the pipe was not. It also really will, uh, loosen up the flow of that stream, allowing fish to pass back and forth. Um, and I mention this because that is a specific master plan recommendation, replacement of that culvert, and it's also in the town's hazard mitigation plan. So from a planning board perspective, that is an item that is, uh, being completed and that was made possible. All of the engineering and construction funding was provided to the town through a grant from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, um, with, with no match required, which is, which is quite rare. Um, so we're, we're lucky to have that, that funding and the, the project is well underway. Rough estimate, obviously, these things are, are never quite set in stone, but probably a couple more weeks and, and that might be expected to be, to be ready to go. And, yeah, the last, uh, update has to do with several changes to state law that just went into effect, that, um, I can go through each one in more detail, but I don't want to take up too much time.
Hold off on that, I think, and then if everybody's fine with it, we can sort of switch gears momentarily to a joint meeting with the ZBA. It looks like we have a quorum present now, um, so we can hold off on that if people struggle with that and presume, um, after our meeting with the ZBA. Excellent, welcome.
Thank you for inviting us.
Yes, thank you. Would, um, do you guys want to sit at the ta, seat at the table, stay in the seats there? What works best?
Turn it off a way so I can't get hit.
As long as we meet the requirements for the video.
Yeah, as long as if the board, if we can do a quick roll call for the zoning board.
Actually, can I check? Do we meet requirements, Dan, for audio?
No, you better press it.
He's joining us. Thanks, Dan.
There are three chairs.
I would like to say the, the southwest part of the downtown area is well represented tonight.
Sure is. You all live in the same neighborhood.
Yeah. Uh, so David Kent.
Here.
Malik Hammond.
Here.
Stephanie Halter.
Present.
And then absent or excused Fred Kelsey, Peter Julia, and Tom McLaughlin. So we have three present, so that, that is a quorum.
We have not had an opportunity as a group to discuss what we would bring to you folks. I have some specific ideas and these other members may have some as well. Uh, so, uh, we can talk about what our ideas are, or you may have questions of us as well.
I don't think we have any questions to open with.
Okay, actually, I might have one question.
Sean surprises me. We have a question.
We made some changes last year.
Yes.
At the planning board level, which then got passed by the public, as you all know, um, which gave you all a big gift of several more special exceptions. And I'm not sure we've ever, I know we've heard from you as a member of the public, but I'm not sure we formally heard from the zoning board their perspective on some of those changes.
I don't think we have.
So I thought that might be appropriate as a question from us.
Any thoughts?
I was thinking like traffic, like how many special exception requests are we getting? Are we getting more now than we used to?
Definitely have more consistent meetings.
Don't receive a lot of applications, but we certainly did, uh, like what the board did last year in terms of special exceptions. I know there was a rumble the year before, but let's get rid of special exceptions and I think it's a, it's a needed thing and I'm going to add to that in a few minutes while we get to talk. So, uh, I think it was a very positive thing that you people did.
And you think we're okay without having any extra criteria than the standard criteria that we?
That's what I'm going to bring you tonight.
Okay. Fair enough.
From my perspective, and these members will have stuff as well, I believe that the criteria for a special exception should be enlarged to take into account the negative externalities on the area. Uh, I don't want to delineate it in terms of size because it, the particular use to which the special exception is sought might extend for 50 feet or 200 feet or 300 feet. So it's an area that that would be affected by a negative externality from that particular special exception. It ought to be something that the board can specifically find on, in my view.
Are you asking about off-site impacts of noise, dust, something more specific than that? Traffic?
You take care of water flow and those kinds of things, traffic, right, exactly, pedestrian risk, all of those things which could be impacted as a result of a special exception that's get, that's granted. And in some cases, it, it might be very slight, in which case the board could make a finding. We don't find an impact on the neighborhood as a result of this, which we have a right to do now. But in other cases, we might say this particular use of what's envisioned could have a major negative impact on some of the neighbors for a substantial, uh, either economic loss or noise loss or enjoyment loss, and we ought to be able to consider those things, in my view.
And there are some things that are already covered under the current criteria, right, in terms of impact on the community locally?
It's just very vague.
Okay. So more specific then?
And, you know, next, negative externalities could be smoke, dust, dirt, noise, uh, those things which make the neighbor suffer as a result of that particular use. And I don't, uh, I don't think when somebody buys a piece of property, invests in building a house, then all of a sudden, next door, because it's allowed in the zoning ordinance, somebody starts with something which is really disruptive. So that's one thing I would suggest.
Yeah, I thought it was in there too, but you're saying something more specifically down in more detail than. And that would be.
Current is more along the, uh, lines of safety and municipal impact.
Impacts for a town.
Exactly. More in relation to, uh, snow removal or whatever, uh, impacted the town itself, not to the neighboring properties.
That could be tuned up a little.
All right, thank you.
We ran into one recently, which I think deserves some looking at, which is, uh, short-term rentals need to be legislated in some way.
That was, yeah.
Either allow them. Recently, a couple of weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
Either, uh, they should either be allowed, uh, in the new extra residence that you have on a piece of property, or they should not. Uh, but that, we ought to have a discrete criteria in terms of how do you control short-term rentals, or should you control short-term rentals?
Do they need to have a permit? Should they be regulated? Should they have requirements, right, things like that? Like other towns have regulated it.
If I may clarify though, I mean, I think this has come before the board in the past, and I think we had two responses. One in the short term, like for just the next couple of years, I think we were planning on talking about this with the housing study master plan as part of our engagement.
Correct.
It's getting public input before we actually like make a change to anything, so we know what the community wants. Um, but beyond that, I think when it's come to the board before as well, um, I think there was, I'm not sure a full consensus, but, um, a kind of general understanding that by not including it in our zoning ordinance, in a permissive ordinance, we are regulating it and we're saying no, except where it's already allowed, for example, in a, in a tourist home. Otherwise, we are regulating it and the answer is no, you can't do it.
There is a real dichotomy, however.
Definition, right?
Someone has a, a single-family home, as an example, they put in the extra unit, which they're allowed to by law, they can rent that out as a short-term rental.
As a tourist home.
If it's an external building, they can't.
Which is why you, you were.
Which is the jam we got into recently.
It was the jam.
It was. Well, with that one, we had some conflict on the board about the definition of the tourist home and what that really is, right? And so we did end up voting to allow that one, uh, special exception for it in agricultural zone.
We were also told there's 30 of these in the town. Now, I don't know whether that.
There's a lot.
Is real or imaginary. So it's no small.
And so saying that we don't allow it without any definitive, uh, route for enforcement, um, that is an enforcement issue in, in some ways more than a zoning issue. It's not allowed in current zoning, and if people are doing it, that's an enforcement issue.
We did have an issue. Remember that house up on Ski Lift Lane?
Yeah.
Couple months ago?
And they could be told to stop.
They were renting it out and the person came to us for a special exception for a fence.
Yeah.
The next-door neighbor.
One of the other problems.
There's definitely people doing it in the residential zones and it is creating some problems and we are seeing that.
So here, here's a question. It seems to me that our definition of tourist home is somewhat a holdover from previous times. Should that be, is that something we should look at revising as a, as a potential zoning change, or did you find it to be useful in your deliberations on current situations, or, or should we?
We were divided on that.
Okay.
It means it's confusing.
Yeah, in some ways I find some of the things in the tourist home as it currently is helpful. Um, owner occupancy does really cut down on some of the negative impacts of short-term rentals, including taking housing off the market, including having unattended people on properties. Um, and so that's, I think, a benefit of the tourist home currently. Um, it probably could be rewritten or changed or what have you. Um, and the fact that you go for a special exception to do it and consider the impact is also a benefit of the current tourist home. I understand there was some like, you know, vagary there that was a holdover from its previous understanding. Um, I mean, I, I do think there's some positive things there to build up that if we did want to more forthrightly address it and put it into our zoning, that there might be some good things there to work with.
Yeah, and I think the tourist home is limiting. It's a very limiting terminology. And I don't think we need to get in the weeds tonight about what changes we'll, we will be making, but I think when we looked at it, oh, was it 2023 potentially, and we decided to hold off? And then we discussed it in 2024, knowing that in 2025, we'll be working on the next phase of the housing project and incorporate it into that. I think it has changed in the fact that 18 months ago, we chose it not as a priority in our zoning amendments. And then when we were discussing them with the housing project for this year to include it in this portion of the housing project, because I do think it needs to be addressed, and if you folks are starting to see it come up more and more as an issue, the tourist home is antiquated too.
But it also, it also encompasses a very traditional use, which has been breakfast.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, those, those fit perfectly into the tourist home definition.
That's separately regulated, I think, isn't it?
Is it?
There's a different definition for a better breakfast.
Which, yeah, I mean, it's, if, if, I mean, I guess if it's, if it's redundant, if there's redundancy there, it would be interesting to explore the differences and potentially combine them.
I had, I had concerns about the relative explosion of these things which are unregulated relative to safety. Who's examining these things? Are there exits? Are there, is there a fire risk? Is there, what kind of risks are inherent?
Yeah, that's interesting because once the town starts examining it, they're assuming the liability to say, we, we said this was safe. Yeah.
I think it's worth noting also, um, that Tom, the inspector, was actually running into that as well and really requesting some clarity on his part so that he could do his enforcement. Although I, I would also say that I think whatever change might take place, I think shouldn't come from Tom or even just from this board. It really should come from listening to the community first and seeing what the public wants to do before we like draft any changes or anything. I do, I wouldn't want to, I mean, short-term rentals have existed for a long time, even before Airbnb and all that. They've gotten more popular, um, and they haven't exploded as much in Plymouth as they have in many other communities. And I think we'd be well-served by moving a little bit slowly, listening to everybody and making a good choice, and also taking into account all the legal decisions that have come down in the last couple of years in terms of how to work this.
There's a conflict between what the legislature created as the extra unit, separate from a, let's say, a one-family house, because this is the dilemma we had.
Detached ADU.
Unattached is not allowed as a short-term rental.
Right.
And should that be that way?
But I mean, it could also be that the goal of that is, is to encourage more, you know, use of ADUs as, as, as apartments or, or long-term housing, not short-term housing.
That's what it was, that's, that's what some of us thought and others didn't. So that was a dilemma we had.
Doesn't the state statute, Joseph, the, you know, now that it's passed, that it's detached or attached, doesn't the state RSA still dictate that it's owner, owner occupied for one of the dwellings?
It does. Yep.
So that's sort of the breakdown is that the ADUs are to be owner occupied.
Yeah.
For a statute.
But they weren't supposed to be short-term rental.
Correct, because
Right.
They can't be transient.
But they're not for transient use.
And they are being used.
That's a change of use though. It's no longer an ADU, as I think you pointed out. Uh, once it becomes a tourist home, that's a change of use. And if the, if it's not used as an ADU for a certain amount of time, that falls off as a, a use on that property.
We were divided on that. That was not a universal view.
But I think it's, it's a good point. I mean, in terms of the issues it raises.
Tourist house is supposed to be attached.
Well, yes.
This was unattached.
Right, and that's a difficult thing because as it, maybe not difficult, but as it reads, it's clearly detached.
Right.
But it's also eight feet away or 12.
It was close.
Extremely close.
It was very close.
In proximity, so they're like, ah.
But it couldn't, it couldn't be 50 feet.
It could have been attached very easily.
Right, and then, then begs the question, what becomes too far than 50 feet?
Can I, can I just say something?
But there.
I, I, I just want to, me personally at least, I don't know how anybody else feels, guard against like the dangers of relitigating what we just, you guys just decided. If we get too into weeds about.
Ours is not a precedent. Anything we do is not a precedent. Every case is individual. Every case is separate.
I, I just, I just don't want to call into question, end up calling into question your decision you just made, like a week ago.
Oh, I'd love you to do it.
Why was it not a precedent? How was it not a precedent?
Because every piece of real estate is unique.
Okay.
Therefore, every decision is unique to that particular piece of real estate.
Okay.
We can hear from neighbors. We could hear from a Butters. So each situation is going to be unique.
So could one argue that if we're, we're seeing something on a parcel and we're deliberating about something, that we might not be setting precedent if we make a decision because it's unique to that?
It's different.
Yeah, I feel sure, yeah.
Let's sort of just clarify on that, okay.
Yeah.
But you're seeing the specific to that land.
The third one I, I would just float is would it pay to have a temporary special exception for a property in transition? That's, that was the case that was brought to us.
Oh, yeah.
Right, because their parents might be coming.
They said, we only want this for two years.
Right.
And I would have loved to.
Once we put it on there, it's on there for good with that property.
Unless, unless they stop using it.
I don't know that it goes away.
No, if they stop using it, I believe a use goes away.
They have to abandon the use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
However, they can sell the property now, the new owners get the use.
Use can be continued as long as it's not.
We would have gladly.
Temporary thing.
If we had the authority, we would have gladly said, sure, go ahead for three years. And then it expires. We didn't have that.
Have a way to reapply for something like that?
Annual permit.
Because she said, I, I, I saw that and.
This is like short-term rental by permit.
Three years and then.
That's somewhat what some towns have done, the short-term rental by permit.
Where you have to, you have to renew it every year.
Yes.
Certify it, all that stuff.
Yeah, need certain requirements that might be changing, right?
So if.
Where's the, where's the state on rooms and meals tax as a, as a, as it applies to short-term rentals?
I'm sure they're going to help it.
Eight and a half percent, I think, nine and a half percent.
But does it apply to short-term rentals? I, I'm not, I, I thought I heard that hotels were complaining that eight, that, that Airbnb was not subject to that.
I believe it, it does apply, but not everybody actually pays it.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a big problem with them, is that they are supposed to and they don't.
And I think a lot of the big companies that manage it pay that automatically actually for the client.
So if they're property management companies, that's one thing, but if it's, if it's, I mean, the whole point of the, of like Verbo and, and Airbnb is that it's, it's managed by the homeowner, by the property owner, and they may not be filing and paying those taxes too.
To your point, I think at some point, some of those big companies like Airbnb did, and at least in some states, start paying that to get themselves out of hot water so they wouldn't be blocked by the states.
Interesting.
And I don't know all the details, but I remember that being an issue.
Something came up in your discussion about a 12-foot building separation. We may want to consider, um, for ADUs, is there a minimum, do we have a minimum building separation for accessory unit, detached accessory units? Because there, there should be minimum separation standards for fire protection. Um, you know, I know that some fire departments don't want houses closer than 30 feet to each other so that you can, you can, you know, separate, you know, if it's attached, it's one thing, because there has to be a firewall between attached units, but if they're detached, there's the issue of fire spreading from one to the other.
There was an existing garage that they converted to an ADU, right?
I was going to say, yeah, even, a lot of people put them over garages and garages can be really close to your house.
They can.
But we do have it, to answer your question, because remember that 11-unit parcel on 1.4 acres out on Fairgrounds Road, Dale and Ari Park?
That was not different than ADUs.
That's different.
Well, there was a building separation code. There's multiple dwellings on one lot.
And that was in the zoning for multiple residential on a single lot, that they had to meet fire safety requirements.
Separation standards.
Um, and that's sep, that's different than the ADU requirements.
Wouldn't that still fall under multiple dwellings on one lot?
No.
Interesting questions that we're, that are coming up here.
Back to the temporary thing, to sort of bring it full circle. So a temporary, if. A temporary special exception, if you will, is that something we'd put through, uh, town meeting, through an amendment, or?
We wanted to put it in the ordinance, but we would have to, yeah, we'd have to put it in the ordinance.
You don't have authority to do it.
Yeah.
That's a conclusion we came to.
Correct.
And then our timeline would be as soon, as, the soonest timeline would be town meeting through an amendment or the ordinance.
And I would say again, I think it's really important to hear what the community wants before we make any of these changes.
Yep, and I think by then.
I agree.
I think by then we might have.
I think.
Some, because I know we have some community outreach discussions.
It's a perfect moment, actually, yeah.
So we might actually get there by then.
So I think in some ways, for me at least, one of the most important questions tonight is not like, what should we do, but what questions should we be asking of our community?
Yeah.
Well, you've got to bring them up to speed before you can ask them questions.
This is true. It's education first, yeah.
Yep, excellent.
We, uh, just as information, Joseph tells me we have one case before the Supreme Court now, and we have, uh, one case where the selectman agreed to grant something which the board didn't grant.
Yep. I appreciate the conclusion of that meeting. I'll just leave it there.
Not happy.
And I've heard people in the town weren't happy. I've heard others.
I would echo, yeah. For those who didn't watch the meeting, anyone want to?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what's being alluded to.
This is, this has to do with Kirks and the.
Tenny Mountain Highway.
And.
Or, or free properties or.
Versus what's happened with the town.
Two are sistered.
One on Tenny Mountain.
Yeah.
Will those vehicles remain in that state?
It's a very high number.
Like 175.
It was more than what we had turned down that application, basically, when they came to us with that number and they got everything they asked for.
Is it sort of like a higher number than what you visually see there now? Is it sort of like a higher number than what you visually see there now, would you think?
I, I don't know that. I think it's really hard to know how many cars they have there.
Exactly.
Fair question, sorry.
It was like 500 cars, right?
It doesn't qualify, viewing it from the road, but I'd have to let the town inspector make that kind of determination.
Well, the thing that was, there was some concern as well that...
It's supposed to relate to drivable vehicles. As I drive by, there's a lot of non...
Your vehicle's the drivable vehicle as you drive by.
But there seemed to be some concern that the ZVA made a decision, and then the town made a separate decision that didn't comply with the ZVA's decision.
They didn't support them.
We had a lot of butters come to that hearing, and there were people that were very upset with the current state of properties.
The thing that was saddening, at least on my part, they may have lost in the Superior Court, I don't know. But then they could have appealed to the Superior Court, the Supreme Court, I believe we had a strong case for what we wanted. For some reason, whether the wind was blowing the other way, or the lawyer didn't fight, or the judge was upset, I don't know. I had educated about how the process actually worked and how it's supposed to work. I think we would have won the case, but that's just my opinion.
It's not.
All you got to do is get the judge to drive by.
Yeah.
Talk to some people in town.
That's a shame.
So...
Especially because the town spent a lot of money on lawyer fees already on that case, right, to settle...
They didn't want to spend the money. I mean, the decree actually says that.
Yeah.
Huh.
That may be very shortsighted.
Very.
Very.
Very. If you're going to have a zoning ordinance, people have to believe it's going to be enforced.
Yeah.
Our board believes that. That's why we take some tough stances sometimes, which may be unpopular, but if the regulation doesn't fit, change the regulation, but live by the regulation.
Yeah.
At the same time, I mean, there's something to be said for, there's no regulation that's perfect enough to accommodate all of the varieties of uses you might encounter in a town, and there should be some flexibility, but I don't think this case needed that flexibility.
Where junkyard is legislated.
Absolutely. I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing on this case. In general, I think that's what the zoning board is for, is for those special exceptions.
Or variances, if it comes to that, you're right.
People had a lot of, not just like unsightly concerns, but also environmental impacts, right, and to health and safety.
Generally, cars that are road-going, you know if they're going to leak something, but if something's sitting three cars deep and you can't even get to it to see if there's a puddle under it, there's a, there's a lot of risk there.
We had a lot of neighbors, especially on the Route 3 property, that have wells.
Yeah.
And they were very concerned, right?
Yeah, a lot of dunk wells down there, too. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we, can I just, sorry, I want to go back just briefly. I want to make sure I understand your comments about negative externalities and special exceptions, because the special exception criteria is the six in the ordinance, right? Adequate size, not adversely affect the character of the area, no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, not excessive undue burden on town services and facilities, and no significant effect resulting upon public health, safety, and general welfare. So those seem like those negative externalities that you mentioned, but are those not specific enough?
I think the word general welfare, unfortunately, is so vague that it could be challenged when we make what seems like an arbitrary decision.
Okay.
That's my difficulty. I mean, I can say almost anything's against somebody's welfare.
Right.
And I'd like to be able, the other problem is, what area is included? It sort of depends on what is proposed. Somebody's running an incredibly noisy operation where it can be heard for a half a mile, that's a negative externality that those people in that area are going to be affected by. If it's something which is a little bit of noise part of the time, maybe the noise aggravates to the neighbor, but not really a negative externality, which we would consider. We need the latitude area-wise as well as impact-wise.
I'm just thinking about the pros and cons of interpretation and becoming too specific, that we can't consider everything?
I'm not asking to be specific.
Okay.
That's why I use the words negative externalities.
Okay, I see. So that specific phrase is the most important.
That's an economic phrase. That's an economic phrase.
Okay.
No, that's fine. I just want to, I want to flesh out some questions here. So, criteria three, the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located. I would think that there would be fairly broad ability to interpret that area as anything, you know, if there's a rock-crushing operation where you can measure off-site sound impacts and it's over 50 decibels at 300 feet away, like you could easily define the area to include all of those 300 feet, right?
The word, I think the problem with what you've read is the word "character." Because agricultural zone is designed as a catch-all. Anything goes, Wild West-type thing. So character becomes a problem as well as...
Agricultural use is, industrial commercial use is not explicitly allowed in those areas. So noise from a rock crusher, I would not expect in an agricultural zone.
Can I just say, this is a good reason to have descriptions of each zone, which we currently do not have. And if we had descriptions of each zone and what these zones actually mean in addition to the use table, that might give you more guidance as well as to like, what actually is that character? So it's not just as vague.
We all know that the name...
Why, yeah, I get that part, yeah.
Ridiculous.
Yeah. Yes.
Agricultural zone name?
Yeah, it may have a historic value, but that's all it has.
Which is why a natural description of the zone might be helpful.
I know.
Some people are quite tied to it.
That's a hard, that's a hard name to choose.
I also wanted to comment, kind of nitpicking a little bit, but you said it's the general welfare, right?
I didn't say the word general. Oh, you said welfare.
It's in the...
No, it's general, it's general something.
It's, yeah.
In the...
In the ordinance.
It's in the criteria right now.
Yeah, it does say general welfare. Number six, the safety and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
And you did say, like, anything could affect somebody, but somebody is not general. If it affects...
Everyone.
A bunch of people, then it starts to become the general welfare. Affecting one person, I suppose if it's enough can like stop something, but otherwise, that's not really the general welfare. That's just like somebody's welfare.
And that can be interpreted, too.
Yeah.
Well, you could make the case that like a rock-crushing operation operating between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM might negatively affect the guy who works nights and sleeps during the day, but that's not a general welfare issue. It's very specific to that one individual. Maybe.
Sorry, because sometimes in agricultural zone, there's not too many neighbors, you know what I mean?
But, yeah, much of the agricultural zone, there's a lot of neighbors.
For a special exception in the agricultural zone, so you can actually like look at that, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
That's why we have a planning board. Any other questions? You guys all set?
Topics?
I don't know. Thanks for the invitation.
Oh, I have a question.
Will you come back?
Oh, God.
The time we're invited and we're available.
Yeah.
Oh, state law.
And if things come up, we try.
Not yet.
I know, I, I adds off to you, because you do have some sticky things.
Some sticky things.
Drinking in public.
Drinking in public?
Yeah.
Social zones?
Well, they just passed a new law.
Just passed that state law.
Did you?
Yeah.
The state, the state passed a law just this week or last week.
I can't imagine what that's going to become.
They're going to make, actually, Joseph, if you wouldn't mind...
I can give a very brief summary. So I didn't, I didn't put this in my memo about state law changes, but it is a recent change to state law that allows towns, at town meeting, to authorize the creation of social districts, which is an area of the community wherein licensed establishments, that is, a licensed beer, wine, liquor-selling establishment can sell alcohol to patrons in designated cups, which they may consume off the premise out in public in that designated area.
Is that a town meeting?
You're going to have a drinking zone?
Yeah. I mean, it empowers towns to adopt that. It does. I mean, feasibly, like in theory, you could, yes.
I could see some places in New Hampshire that being an okay thing.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's Plymouth.
They need to improve the crosswalks a little more.
Those better lighting.
A little better lighting.
I don't know what in the world would happen if you went to the town meeting with something like that.
I'm not saying we should have one, but the fact is, there are people in our community already walking around intoxicated from time to time, especially certain times of year with their, like, nice weather and students having parties and stuff. And this wouldn't necessarily, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we should actually do this, but it doesn't necessarily like increase public intoxication, but it does allow for regulation of that in particular places as a, and you can't just tailgate there, because it has to be like provided by a certain provider. Something, the negative impacts aren't necessarily as big as some people, I think, would imagine, which is not to say we should do it here, but I, I don't think in most places, if they adopt this, it's going to lead to increased like public intoxication, because people are already drinking in bars and then going out and wandering around and falling over. That happens anyway.
Wait, this doesn't permit, this doesn't permit you to be intoxicated in public?
No.
No.
Or you consume it. If the town does, it needs an...
In a nice outdoor space.
There are states where...
With a specific cup.
But can you, can you drink at a school?
It wouldn't...
I mean, if you, if you... Do this like in North Conway?
I would like to remind you, there are states where you can illegally buy a drink at a drive-through and drive away while consuming it.
A lot of states have that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, there are states where it's illegal to be intoxicated, but there's no prohibition against consuming.
Marble Valley's a great example. That'd be a great spot.
And you can't.
You can up there, yeah.
You may remember, on the stairs here, we used to have a courtroom, and on a spring weekend or a fall weekend, we'd have 30 youngsters, all of whom been arrested that weekend, you know, en masse. So, you know, drinking in public is not something that has not happened in the past.
Because I think it's more of a boom for businesses.
If you regulate what you can regulate.
Businesses might start advocating for this or promoting this. That's something that I think that people need to consider, because businesses have advocated for other things, like at town meeting, they advocated for gambling, right, right? We had the Keno.
We might see a petition zoning amendment to adopt this, signed by 25 members of...
Phil is proposing.
And we would have nothing to...
It would, I mean, it might go to town meeting.
This would not surprise me.
Neil, if someone was sitting in their front yard with a bottle of beer, would they violate this law?
Yeah.
In your front yard?
Yeah.
It depends where the social zone is defined, because you can't leave, you can't leave the social zone with your, with your, with your drink.
If you're in public.
And it can't be a glass bottle. It has to be a plastic cup that's labeled specifically for to-go sale.
For somebody in the downtown area, suppose, they're sitting in their own front yard, private property.
Oh, with an open container?
Yes.
That should be legal.
I mean, you yourself or your own property.
Be sitting in my own yard with a drink?
Yeah.
I do it all the time.
People have it in their restrooms.
I think Christian's got it wrong.
I hope it's not illegal.
Everybody knows that.
It's in the zone. What if it's in the zone?
I don't, I think it has to be a public space presumably to be...
I, all I have is the AI summary of the law, but it has to be, if, so let's say the zone went from, you know, KTM up to the end of the square, it would encompass like the Lucky Dog, Grotto, and Yamas, and they might all have to-go cups and people could come hang out on the square.
Or people could get like dinner and drinks and then take it to the green.
But then you can't, the way the rule is written is, you can go anywhere within that social zone as it's defined, but you're not supposed to leave that social zone. But enforcement is...
I think, imagine this, there are already establishments, especially in other towns, with large outdoor spaces that are on their private property where you can drink, and this is kind of like, in theory, would have kind of expanded that to a slightly more expansive public space, but it's still like delimited, where you could do something similar just to get some fresh air, I suppose, and be social, and...
I think when restaurants file their liquor permit, they have to define where it's going to be. So like, if you go to like the Little Red Schoolhouse in Camden, like, you can take a drink outside and take it to the picnic tables next to the...
Meredith.
Like, you know, there are places where you can be outside, but it's on a single private parcel. This would allow off parcel, off-property transport of those to-go drinks.
It'll be interesting to see if they take it and extend it to the lakes.
I thank you for the invitation. I'd like to come to the meeting when this is discussed, but I got to go now.
Thank you.
We'll wait for your petition zoning amendment.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Malick. How was your hike, Steph?
It was great.
Awesome.
Yeah, 27 miles in, in three days, two nights.
Nice. Good for you. That's awesome.
Yeah, six, four thousand.
The teenager. And you're both here. Good.
Cool.
Good.
See you later.
Yeah.
Hottest days of the year.
Is there anything we can do adjourn for their quarantine or change in...
We'll denote that there's no longer a quorum here. The ZVA, 722, left.
Is it a quorum of only three because the board is so small?
Yeah, it's a five-member board.
Okay.
With one alternate.
One alternate, yep.
David said, "I'm leaving," and hence there was no longer a quorum.
So theoretically, two members could have stayed as members of the public.
That's true.
Yeah, okay.
There is no longer a ZVA quorum, therefore the meeting is adjourned more.
Well, we shall move on as a planning board.
I'm sure Dave Kent knows a lot more about this drinking in public.
Changes, though, the laws change, right?
Careful, Neil.
This is the town, I mean, he's been sitting on the bench for years.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But he only enforces the laws on the books at the time. If the laws change, he's got to stand top of it, right?
So...
We're going to keep moving it under you. How do you like that?
Oh.
I love it. Wait, what?
I love it.
Joseph?
Yes.
I propose the, what I feel was probably the last communication received that you were going to discuss, was your memorandum here of recent changes to state law impacting our zoning.
Yep.
Let's take some time and go through this and sort of discuss how this will affect our potential changes.
Yeah, absolutely. If the board wants, I can start with just giving an overview of what's changed, and then if we want to, if the board wants to take some time, if the board wants to take some time and look at it, or if we want to delve back in to any particular one, happy to. But if it's easiest, I can just give an overview of everything and then we can dial in from there if that, if that works for folks.
I think that sounds good. Does everyone care?
I choose that one, yes.
Ooh.
I kind of like the one at a time, but like, whatever. If everybody else wants to do it the other way, then that's fine.
Well, you do one at a time. I do whatever.
Oh, just to go through one at a time?
Sure.
And then discuss?
Or like, do one, discuss it, do one, discuss it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. So as I've been alluding to for a little while, the planning department has the planning department has been monitoring a number of pieces of legislation, which, if signed into law, would have direct implications for planning and zoning here in Plymouth. Some of them are direct preemptions of local zoning, and of course, zoning in New Hampshire is enabled at the municipal level by state law. So they do set the parameters within which municipalities have the authority to zone. So, as a result, they, they do have the authority as well to place limitations on, on what we can and cannot do with zoning and, and other related, related items. So, I wanted to summarize a few of these because now several of them have been signed into law as of the fifteenth, so just a couple of days ago here. And some of them are in effect as we speak. Some of them are immediate effect. Some don't take effect for a little while. Many of them, though, will require us to, to do something different. So I'll start with, start with the first one, which was originally known as House Bill 631, which is multifamily buildings in commercial zoning districts. This one goes into effect July first of next year, though, so we do have a town meeting cycle to, to make zoning changes to comply with this one, which is different than some of these other pieces of, of law that, that are changed, so.
Can you say that again? We do have time because-
Correct. So this law does not go into effect until after town meeting.
Okay.
So-
Thank you.
Some of these laws, as I'll mention a little bit later, are in effect immediately. Therefore, we may have zoning that is, at this point, on its face, in direct conflict with state law. But I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit when we get to the later ones. And we're, we're looking into it to make sure we, we do that right in, in this sort of interim period wherein our zoning says one thing and state law says another. But that's not the case with this one. However, this law does say that in all land zones for commercial activities, defined as including retail and office uses, multifamily residential development must be allowed, provided that adequate infrastructure, water, defined as water, sewer, and roads, is available to support the development. Municipalities may require, but do not have to require, that ground floor space or a percentage thereof be dedicated to commercial uses. So requiring that to be a mixed-use development as opposed to just multifamily. But multifamily may still be restricted in zones where industrial and manufacturing uses are permitted. And internal residential conversion must be allowed for buildings which do not meet current dimensional requirements. So that's if you had a commercial building, a retail store, that was too close to the setback. The zoning must allow for residential conversion of that. Implications for Plymouth at a high level. Multifamily is already permitted in the Village Commercial Zoning District, though commercial is required on the ground floor unless you get a special exception. Multifamily is permitted by special exception in highway, commercial, civic, institutional, industrial, commercial, and agricultural. And it's also permitted in multifamily residential. So at a bare minimum, multifamily will need to become a permitted use in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. That's the one that this law clearly applies to because it allows for those commercial uses, but does not allow for industrial uses. The planning board could decide to write a zoning amendment for this in a number of different ways, but generally, it, it's going to need to include allowing multifamily by right, either with a first-floor commercial requirement or not. The civic institutional zone may also meet the definition of a commercial zone for purposes of this law, since it does permit some limited commercial uses by right, such as office and commercial service, but does not include retail. So we'll have to consider a little bit whether, as defined under the law, the CI zone will need to be changed to permit multifamily. Industrial Commercial Development District, however, since it permits industrial uses, most likely is not impacted by the law. So that's, that's the, the big picture, you know, high-level overview of, of how this relates.
We're not required to allow it in the ICD, but we still could.
Correct, yep.
I have a question. What if commercial is, I, I, I'm actually just wondering about the ag zone, where a commercial is sometimes allowed, is other times allowed by special exception, and it's not quite as black and white? And what about the ag zone?
So, okay, can I ask a related question?
Yeah, of course.
Because, like, I'm looking at our table of uses and we have this big list of commercial uses. One of them is commercial service, but, like, are we required to allow-
Could it be one of them?
Multifamily housing in every one of those, every zone that allows, that permits a commercial use?
Somehow.
Any commercial use.
Or is it, does it have to be ha-
It's pretty much whole town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or does this have to be titled "commercial"?
Right.
So commercially zoned land, for the purposes of the law, at this point, means, and I'm quoting here directly, means land zoned for such commercial activities as retail and office space. So it does not say permits by special exception or permits by right, but it does say "zoned for" commercial activ-, such commercial activities as retail and office space. I would say immediately, if you-
Both of those are special exception currently.
In, it depends on the zone. In the ag zone, yes.
So it would not, we would not be required to allow in the ag zone then?
I would say that is my initial impression.
Until, until a judge says differently.
Until I, right. And perhaps more guidance will come out, but at this point, we just have the actual definition used in statute to go off from. But if such commercial activities as retail and office space are what, a piece of land is zoned for, then you have to allow-
So here's an interesting, if we want to split hairs, the, if, if it says retail and office space, the CNI allows for, or, or, sorry, the, the, C, commercial, no, what is that?
ICD?
Highway Commercial?
No.
Civic Institutional.
Civic Institutional allows for office space, but does not allow for retail. So that would not require, that would not meet the definition of retail and office space.
I don't think we should.
I'm splitting hairs.
I mean, no, I-
If they want to be jerks, we could be jerks.
No, I-
I'm happy to be a jerk with them.
I mean, I'm looking at what this, our civic zone is, and it's-
It's, it does not, it does not allow retail and office, so thereby we do not have to allow multifamily housing in that zone.
A lot of these bills were not very well-written. They're better written now than they were in the beginning, but they're still, like, full of, like-
Exactly.
I know. I'm fine with that.
The one that very clearly this applies to is highway commercial. I agree that CI may or may not, depending on whether you, how, how much attention you give that "and", but I, I agree, highway commercial is the one that allows for both of those uses and does not allow industrial.
Yeah.
Highway commercial and village commercial.
And village commercial.
Which already, it already is allowed.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see a problem with, I mean, honestly, when I think about the highway commercial and how limited it is, I think multifamily housing should be, would be fine there anyway, especially, especially if we do first floor, especially if we do first-floor retail.
What, what, what is multifamily right now in the civic institutional?
It is a special exception.
But it could, I mean, we could also do permitted in the civic institutional, but it-
I, I, I'm only asking because somebody in town is talking about creating multifamily housing, which may or may not even need a variance currently, come with a university.
Oh, really? Interesting.
Yeah.
They do, but they do if it's not a public use.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, they're exempt if it's-
So if they, if they, my reading would be, maybe we should ask the ZBA about this. My reading would be if they just, I think, I think we talked about this. If they just allow, like, faculty and staff to live there, they can probably get away with it being a public use. If they allow other people to live there, then I think it becomes a non-public use and subject to zoning. In which case, they can't go over six units.
I think you're-
They want to compete with the-
But if they want to-
Yeah.
But if they build it to be a, if they build it to be a private use and then convert it later, it would be a change of use that would have to be subject to-
I'd love to see them pay taxes on that building, too.
Not only taxes, but they'd need a, they'd need a variance.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
To be honest, though, I'm, I'm happy to see the, the college do what they need to do to maintain financial viability.
I will, I will just mention again, this is one of the reasons I brought up the potential zoning amendment a few months ago. One of many reasons. I think it's good for many scenarios, to allow existing buildings to be converted to residential, even going above unit numbers, if there are already existing buildings that are already in our fabric of our town.
And doesn't the state law include that?
No.
Oh, and not by uni-, not units?
I agree with that. I think that makes a lot of sense. There are definitely some large buildings in town that are perfectly appropriate to be turned into more than six units.
And they already exist, so it's not like they'd be changing radically the character.
Right.
And you could even have a cutoff date, like, if it's, like, Joseph and I talked about it at some point. Like, if it's before the date that we enacted this, then the danger is, if you don't say something like that, I, I think, is if there's no cutoff date or some kind of stipulation, I'm not sure how other communities have done this. A lot of communities are starting to do this, that you could create a commercial building by commercial standards, knowing that you want to convert it in two years to residential.
Yeah, I don't like this idea, actually.
Um, no, but there, there are ways of writing this to-
A large commercial building? Just because we have a large building, should they, hey, we already have this large building. Whatever best suits the building owner for the number of units they need, they should be able to do because the building is already there and already large. Because I think it goes to what you're saying, the commercial use, the use change is what's huge. It's like, so it's a commercial use building and now it's-
Change of use to residential.
Change of use, which is a significant change of use. I don't know, it's a, I think there's a lot of work to-
But, but, but think about this. You could end up with residential properties that are far cheaper to produce than building a new multifamily unit. And-
Theoretically, they're still going to be market-rate housing. I mean, no one's going to say, "I built it cheaper, therefore, this is now not market-rate."
No, but it's, it's still-
When you theorize about how someone's going to price, unless it's subsidized housing.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not theorizing-
Unless it's subsidized housing, we're just theorizing that it's going to be priced better-
I'm not theorizing that.
For the consumer.
I'm not, I'm not theorizing that, though.
Okay.
What I'm theorizing is that you can end up with more housing on the market, which is a good thing overall because it can reproduce cheaper by reusing an existing building.
And you were saying-
Reuse it cheaper for the person that's doing it, not-
And, and overall, just have more housing on the market, which is not a bad thing.
No, and I would argue-
Regardless of how much it's, it's going for.
I, I would argue that, you know, a large, existing building that may have some amount of value as a commercial property, if converted to, let's say, a, a single building is converted to, you know, fifteen residential units, the value of that property is going to go up and the tax value is going to go up. And it's going to, that's going to contribute to building out the assessed value of the town, which will help decrease the tax rate overall.
John, you were saying something about a time cutoff, so you can't have people building new commercial buildings and then saying, "Oh, I'm going to convert it to housing now."
Yes, there has to be some kind of mechanism to prevent people from doing just that.
Like, the building has to have been built prior to two thousand?
Either the building has to exist and is commercially used for a certain number of years-
I see.
Or anything, only things created before the enactment of this is actually even allowed to be converted. Or, but, but there has to be, but there has to be some mechanism to avoid people doing a bait and switch.
Right.
Yeah.
And it would allow PSU, if they needed to, without going through a variance, which are probably, hard to get frankly for this, I think, to offer units not just to their own faculty and staff, which I think might be a public use. I don't think beyond that would be a public use. Anyway, just my thoughts. And it could get it on tax rules. If it's not, if it's not a public, if it's not, if it's not a public use. No, I mean, I mean, like, a PSU property.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we, he'll help me remember how that connected to the state law?
It did somehow, but I forgot.
Yeah, okay. That's, I was just trying to-
CI zone, civic institutional zone.
Civic, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a civic institutional zone, which, which made me think about housing there and plans for housing there of, that certain people are being very vocal about. Has anybody else read about this?
I haven't, no.
No.
Um, the uni-, the university is not quite vocal about converting, which dorm is it?
The one on Highland Street. I don't recall the name.
Bell, no?
What are the avenues of being vocal about it?
It's in the Business New Hampshire magazine.
Thank you.
The president of the college was quoted.
It's like, we're excited. We're excited.
So it, it is out there in public. It's not a-
Okay, it's not like an inside mountain.
There's like bugs about it and like, it's-
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I just was curious.
All up to the article.
Yeah.
Joseph, any other thoughts or anyone else have any other thoughts?
Sorry to get us off track. Sorry to get us off track, but, yeah. I do think it's important to potentially consider that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the obvious step is to start with the highway commercial and then-
Yeah.
I'm reticent to say, "Yeah, we're going to include it in the civic institutional." And let, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in what you were saying about footprints and-
And I, I think for the ICD, when we talked to Judy last time she was here, I think we talked about that as part of our engagement, whether or not the public is actually interested in housing there or not.
Yeah, I think highway commercial is pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think the, I think the ICD, we actually mentioned to her as part of our engagement for the master plan.
There are some properties along Tenny Mountain Highway now that are probably good examples of what could be first-floor retail, second-floor residential.
Yeah.
What's, what's the development on the south side of the highway just before Tenny Mountain, like the Cologne?
The commercial park?
Yeah, they're, they're all like green gambrel roof. It's a professional center.
Yes, I know the one you mean.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Colonial something, something there.
Air boutique in the Benz, it was in there.
Yeah, and then, like, there's, there's offices.
Is it off yet?
Colonial Square, yeah.
But, I mean, most of the second floor is all, like, professional services, but, like, those could easily be residential above retail and not affect the character of the area.
But you're a large thing that got built.
The, the parking needs overlap.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
So, you know, you can, you can get by with less parking because you don't have to be- Residents that leave that are there at night but leave during the day and, you know, people that come into, frequent the businesses during the day. So it's not the end of the world.
Which is why, as part of our engagement, we have to make sure we ask everybody about this.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's the whole point of the top process right now, so housing master plan.
The flower shop, too.
Flower shop, here in Ridge that just got built next to Grand State Glass.
And find out what the community wants.
And that's a very one. You have two units upstairs, parking in the back for the residents, tenants, and-
We, we could probably, you know, identify several properties there that are residential over retail and, as examples, and say, you know, "Is this something we want to permit explicitly in the ICD? Or do we want to reserve the space for more commercial or industrial use?" Knowing that we've made it more difficult to cite those uses in the ag zone, like, do we want to reserve those spaces for more of those uses?
So we have two kind of questions to add to our list of housing outreach, right? Short-term rentals and ICD.
Yeah.
I think the ICD was, I think they were both already on there.
Were they?
They were both going to be talked.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Well, Joseph needs an answer so we can get him an amendment.
I've heard-
I think we should definitely move forward with the highway commercial.
Which we have to anyway, I guess.
But I, I, I think anything that we allow there should be residential over retail. No, no first-floor residential.
On, on highway commercial?
What do you think? I, I, I honestly, I think anytime we have the opportunity to do first-floor retail with residential over it, it, it's good for the town.
There's been a lot of pushback lately from, there's a lot of support for that type of development.
Mixed use.
Mixed use for very good reasons in, like, downtown cores.
Yeah.
But beyond that-
That's not downtown enough.
Beyond that, there's an argument that it can actually prohibit the development of residential properties because that actually adds a lot of costs and takes away revenue from a property to main, to mandate first-floor commercial. It's great for the character of a downtown, but if it, if it goes too far, you can actually dissuade developers from even trying to build anything.
So we're not necessarily, I think, trying to persuade developers to build, or I think, making sure we're giving them mechanism to.
But, but by mandating first-floor commercial, you might be dissuading them from even trying.
I'm thinking about what-
As opposed to leaving them the option of doing it if they want.
Or, but, and that's what I'm saying, is not leaving them the option and saying, if you are, because we have the right to choose, the town has the right to choose to say the first floor is going to be or is not going to be something. So I think that's when we can decide, talking to the public as well, to say, if, just say on Tenny Mountain Highway, for example, on Tenny Mountain Highway, would you want to see housing that has, that is on the first floor as well? Or would you only want it to be, you know, second floor and off?
And I think it's, I think it's important that, as part of that discussion, the public also realize, realizes that as wonderful as it is to build that way, and it's what makes our downtown so wonderful, that it also can easily convince a developer not to build.
Thinking about what the highway commercial district is like as well, and there-
There's some existing residential uses.
And there's some exist, I mean, it's a mixture. I think, so I think mandating it has to be commercial isn't necessarily in keeping with the, what the zone is like right now.
So can I read, so our, our existing table of uses for the highway commercial permits accessory dwelling units, residential institutions, that's it for residential uses. The, all these other residential uses are by special exception. So manufactured housing, multifamily dwellings, we, so we already allow multifamily by special exception, but open space residential by special exception, rooming house, special exception, single-family detached by special exception.
There's so many houses out there.
But, but that's not what it's zoned at currently. So those are all non-performing homes. You can't build new one, you can't build new single-family houses-
They're old homes, too, so they're pretty-
In the highway commercial without a special exception.
And to some extent, I think, looking forward, that might make sense. For, no, for, for the single family, anyway. I'm not sure that's the direction it's best to go with the-
With land that has more commercial value.
Land that has more commercial value and utility, and all the other stuff it has, um, I think that's not a terrible thing, but at least for the single family residential, detached, um.
So in the village commercial, we currently require ground floor retail, but we say you can have ground floor residential by special exception, that's another kind of middle-of-the-road approach.
Maybe that's a good way to go forward with the highway commercial.
Yeah.
Or, or do we just wanna have first floor, like, multifamily with first floor, like, you know, if you're looking for ADA compliant units and you have to have a percentage, you could have, you know, it would prove, if you, if you're required to have a certain amount of ADA compliance and you're doing multifamily residential, you'd then have to put in an elevator into a building with first floor, right, retail, whereas if you do first floor residential, then you could make ADA compliant units on the first, first floor.
I mean, I, I look at this, I mean, you know, I, I feel myself odd even arguing this, but I love first floor retail.
Mm-hmm.
But I look at Plymouth's capacity to expand, um, a commercial district with, like, intense walkability and first floor retail, even with, hopefully, the new, like sidewalks and stuff going to North Main and all that, um, and I wonder if really kind of focusing that activity downtown and kind of building out some of the empty spots down the hill and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, is a more apt place to really intensely push for walkable commercial development, and a little bit further out on the highway commercial, saying, you know, if you wanna do a residential structure without commercial, that's fine, and if you wanna do commercial right next door, or even first floor, if you can make that work, that's fine as well, but not mandating first floor retail.
Yeah.
Or commercial.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's my personal take.
I'm okay with that.
I'm in agreement.
All right, let's move on to the next one.
Great.
Everyone's good for this start of the discussion on that one?
Yeah, and I can always work up a, some conceptual language, and then the board can, based on this discussion, and then the board can always, you know, use that as a starting point for further discussion in the future, too. So the next one that I have here is HB 577, or as it was formerly known, uh, this says that accessory dwelling units must be permitted by right in all zones that allow residential uses, that means attached and detached accessory dwelling units, for a thorough description of the changes to the current ADU law, please see the attached guidance document from New Hampshire Municipal Association, which they got out very quickly, um, so I did attach that to the back of the memo, but broadly speaking, the, the big change here is they must be permitted by right in, uh, any zone that permits residential, attached or detached. Right now Plymouth, uh, complies with that in all, except for single family residential. In single family residential, we require a special exception for ADUs, there are, there are one or two other things that may need to be slightly tweaked, so it does say that , uh, any aesthetic standards applied to ADUs must also be applied to the prin, the principal dwelling unit, and the only one that we currently impose that's above and beyond what we impose on a regular dwelling is requirement that any exterior stairwells be covered, um, because currently there is no such requirement on a, on a single family home, but on the accessory dwelling unit, we require that.
Is that an aesthetic requirement?
We, we could easily require that on single family homes.
True.
And comply, right?
Why do we require that?
It seems like a snow thing.
It's, yeah, I'm just curious. And I don't disagree that safety, snow, it helps, helps else, but why do we impose that on.
Protects the integrity of the structure.
All manner of use, but that's, once again, not our choice as a town to impose that on someone.
But not every single outside staircase needs a roof on every house.
I will.
But it's only on ADUs.
I just wonder why, I wonder what that derives from.
I, I, I think the thinking is that it's gonna be like a second story over a garage, and that it's gonna be a full flight of stairs, not like two steps down from a landing.
Or a deck staircase.
I, I, I feel of two minds on this one, I feel for safety, like, it, it makes sense 'cause it provides stairs that are not gonna be full of ice and snow.
Ice, yeah, yeah.
At the same time, looking around town and seeing them on some of our student rentals, they are not always the most attractive structures.
That's true.
Well, it protects the structural integrity.
Like a covered bridge.
Yeah.
I mean, most of those structures are pressure-treated anyway, but.
Yeah, I mean, my family has a deck with a staircase and putting a, it's not close to the house, putting a, putting a roof over the staircase would be like.
Silly.
Silly and onerous cost.
Well, is it only if it's, Joseph?
Mm-hmm.
And for ADU, it's almost, almost, almost probably a non-issue, is it only if it's like a primary egress, as opposed to like a stairs to a deck?
It does not specify, I'll read the, I'll read the criteria here, um, so, doesn't say it, so, let me just pull this up. Any exterior stairway leading to the ADU shall be covered or enclosed.
Leading to, was it leading to the main entrance?
I, I understand the safety issue if it's, despite the aesthetic issues.
If it's the only, if it's only.
If it's, if it's your only way in and out of the building.
Yeah, right.
Um, on the other hand, I wouldn't wanna mandate on that on someone's deck.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, uh.
I'm not sure that's an aesthetic concern, though, I think.
It may not.
That's what I mean, it doesn't seem like an aesthetic.
I think that's a, that's a safety concern.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know if it's necessarily, so I'm thinking, like, what if you have five steps, right?
Yeah.
And, so like, say you, you enter into your house, right, there's like five steps going up, and then like, say like a six-foot walkway, like.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Just to get to the grade.
You might have a covered porch with the steps off the front, which aren't covered.
More like a stoop than a, like, actual stair.
Right, but it's more than, you know, it's more than three steps, so it needs a handrail or whatever that is.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the executive decision here, because I have the authority to do so.
Sure.
That, there's no reason, whoever made that up, whenever they did, would have made that up for aesthetic reasons, because they like the look of a, of a cover on your stairway.
I don't think it's aesthetic.
It has, it has to be for safety reasons.
I don't think it's an aesthetic requirement.
So I do not think that falls under the purview of aesthetics, and I, I have spoken.
It's a safety requirement, an aesthetic requirement.
You can take me to the Supreme Court.
No, I mean, I.
What's yours?
The town's got deep pockets.
Yeah, just ask them.
Okay, I, I will say, I was kidding about that.
Yeah.
Just for the record.
We get it.
I, I think, I, I would support that, that concept.
What do we, what do we need to do for this?
So, so we need, we need to.
What do we need those terms?
We need to change ADU from special exception to permitted in the single family.
So it's not just a change to the use table?
Right, and we could, so, there's another provision in the law that says you must allow conversion of an existing non-conforming accessory structure to an ADU, and there's nothing in our regs that expressly disallow that, but we could clarify that at the end of one of the criteria we have, that is to say, if you have a garage that is too close to the property line, uh, you know, within the setback, you would be allowed to convert that to an accessory dwelling unit as this, as this law is written, whether or not it complies with current setbacks, as long as you don't make it more.
And presumably, in our proposed zoning amendments, including the FRROD, um, does that currently have ADUs as a special exception?
I think it does.
Murdering the village commercial?
Uh, the single family.
Single family, I mean, sorry.
So that FR.
Now, now would need to be changed, as well.
But big, the, the meat of the changes has to be permitted by right, and in fact.
Right.
That is effective, actually, the law was written as effective July 1st, um, it was signed July 15th, so that is, that is law today, this is not one of the ones that doesn't go into effect until after town meeting, we are sifting through that from a permitting perspective, and, and.
It's pretty cut and dry, you just, it changes.
Check.
Our law is no longer.
The law does supersede local zoning, it is, typically, it's, it's not appropriate for the town to directly, um, go in opposition to the local zoning ordinance, but I think in this case, it, it may be so clearly overridden by, by state law, but we are just trying to make sure we, we are a hundred percent operating correctly, since it's kind of this limbo period where, on its face, our ordinance does not.
I think the state has given guidance to that effect already.
So, so if it's allowed by, if, if someone, for example, has a garage that's non-conforming and let's say with the older village section, it's allowed by right if they wanted to build an ADU on top of that garage, so they don't have to come to us?
Or convert it.
Or convert it, they don't have to come to us about it.
If, if it violates setbacks, if you've got a garage that's, that's within the setback and you could not build an ADU there, like, you could convert that non-conforming garage to anything.
Right, so, but that, in that situation, in that example, no one has to come to the planning board or zoning.
Correct, so special exception, conditional use permits cannot be required for an ADU, um, really, in, in any circumstance, unless there's something else about it that's requiring it to get, uh, to get relief, so, in that example, if there wasn't an existing non-conforming structure that you were building it in the footprint of, then you would still have to get a.
Yeah, if they're building something new.
But generally, the answer would be, they're permitted, they, it doesn't invalidate the, the requirements, so owner occupancy, size limits, everything that's spelt out in zoning today generally would, would still apply, it's just that they would have to be permitted, that's, that's the big picture.
We have two things in our existing language about ADUs that is, that are relevant to this, so, one is under, under 2I, construction of the ADU shall meet all building code, life safety code guidance, that's not the part, this is the part, this, the architecture and design of the ADU shall reflect, reflect that of the primary residence, so that gets at the aesthetics, like, you can't require aesthetics of the ADU that you don't require of the primary, and we already say it should be the same, the second one is J, uh, the construction of the ADU shall not increase the non-conforming aspect of the existing structure, so, like, if you have something that's too close to the lot line, if you have a one-floor garage, you can't make the second floor cantilevered closer to that, not that, not that lot line, right?
Other than the window.
Right, so, like.
The old colonial style.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Top is bigger than the bottom.
Yeah, cantilevered, right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's interesting, and we have, just looking at the regulations we have, we're, we're already accommodating some of these.
Pretty well, how far we've come with ADUs in just a few years.
I know, right?
All right, um, Joseph, on to the next, if you're comfortable with that moving on.
Absolutely, so, uh, 457, restrictions on the local ability to impose occupancy limitations, so, this change to state law requires, states that no ordinance may be enforced, which restricts the number of occupants of a dwelling unit to less than two occupants per bedroom, or, which is based on familial or non-familial relationships, among other characteristics, but that's the, that's the relevant one here, so Plymouth's zoning has two definitions of a family, one is a related family and one is an unrelated family, in Plymouth's zoning, a related family is any number of people who are related, largely, an unrelated family is any group of three or fewer people who are not related and live together as a housekeeping unit, so there is a, the zoning ordinance currently differentiates in terms of occupancy between a unit occupied by people who are related and those who are not, that does need to change under this statute, that needs to be consolidated into one definition of family that does not differentiate between related or unrelated.
Can I point out that our provision on, uh, section 2D of ADUs says our ADU shall not include more than two bedrooms, nor shall it be occupied by more than two adults per ADU, I think we would have to change that to allow for up to four adults, right?
That's correct, yeah, I, I didn't catch that, but that's a, that's a good point, it definitely would invalidate that.
It's a lot of people.
It is. In, in, in less than a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
The other piece would be that.
We would have to allow for that, I mean, that, but that's the, the stat, I mean, the size, we limit the size to a thousand square feet, but if you really wanna build, what, what I was just thinking of is, is if you wanna build an ADU that's bigger than a thousand square feet, we allow for co- located residences on the same lot, if you can meet.
Site plan review, right?
What's that?
Is it with, through site plan review to do that?
Uh, for a conditional use permit.
For a conditional use permit, so, like, you could make a 1,200-square-foot, three-bedroom accessory dwelling unit with a, via conditional use permit.
Mm-hmm.
Detached, so, increased, interestingly, for the conditional use permit, we do require minimum separation for fire protection, the ADU, we do not, although, I mean, the general protection about, um, building code, life safety code guidance, that could require built, minimum building separation, but it would, it's up to the code enforcement officer.
It's also one of the reasons why it's small, right? A thousand, a thousand square feet.
Yeah, but I mean.
Building codes do, uh, catch some of that, but I, I don't have the information to say exactly, and it does.
It usually falls into land use codes, though, like, usually if the building code deals with it by saying, if, if there's less than this fire separation, like, you have to have a firewall, or, or the entire enclosure has to be built to a one-hour standard, but.
Absolutely.
Or sprinkled, like, it, it, I don't know. I have a question.
Um, I have a question about a phrase, and why, I, I know you can't read minds, but I'm not sure if anybody's talked about why this was included.
Yep.
Among other, among other characteristics, why was that phrase included in here?
That's my phrase, so I, I don't.
Oh, that's, oh, that's your paraphrasing.
So, I am paraphrasing that they include other characteristics in the law, so I'll read them out here.
Okay.
So, such legislative body shall not adopt any ordinance based on the familial or non-familial relationships or marital status, occupation, employment status, or the educational status, including but not limited to scholastic enrollment or academic achievement at any level among the occupants of the dwelling unit, including but not limited to college students and the governing body thereof shall not enforce any such ordinance.
This is, this is, this is, this is all about, this is all about college.
It means that you can't, in your, let me see if I have this right, in your zoning ordinance, you can't say, well, you can't have more than three college students living together.
Correct.
For example, which we don't say that.
Unless they all have, unless they all are on Dean's List.
We just kinda.
Unless they're all, yeah, unless they're all honor students, then it's fine.
So, yes, we actually do say that essentially in our zoning ordinance.
But none of those exact words.
So it does, right, and that's why I say, among other characteristics, because the one that's relevant to Plymouth is familial or non-familial status, if there are, if the people living in a single-family home are related, you can have any number, as long as life safety codes are met, if those people are not related, you can only have three, regardless of the size of the dwelling, so that is differentiating between.
Just for the town that, that changed at a certain college town, not this one, was very strongly opposed to.
Correct, I, I don't know that there has been a lot of, yeah, I, I can't say, it do wasn't, I don't think this was targeted at Plymouth, but, um, I, I do think it impacts us directly and we need to comply with it, and the other thing that we need to do, so, special exception criteria, there are some uses that have additional criteria beyond the six, one of those is multi, one of those are multifamily, or, sorry, residential uses in the village commercial zone, which of course only applies to ground floor residential uses, because other residential uses are permitted by right, but that has two of the extra special exception criteria, say, for units occupied by a related family, two parking spaces per unit shall be provided, for units occupied by an unrelated family, one parking space per bedroom shall be provided, so those are some of the additional criteria, which are saying, in effect, you have to provide a different amount of parking, depending on whether you're going to be renting to people who are related or not, and.
So if there's students, we provide even more glorious real estate for cars.
We require that the landlord provide more parking.
So that, that, those criteria, those additional residential uses on the ground floor in the village commercial zone, the board could look at those criteria in more detail and rethink them, or think about whether they're all still relevant, or we could just strike the ones that deal with whether you're related or not.
In one apartment, one year you could have a married couple and the next year you could have two unmarried people and the parking spaces stay the same.
That is the problem with this, the way this is written today. I think that.
I mean, frankly, I don't care who's in the building necessarily and how they're related to one another. If they choose to live together and cohabit, that is fine with me.
Right.
And, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
If people are happy cohabiting together, let them. I don't want to regulate how their, like, their personal lives and their building.
You know, in a lot of other countries, multi-generational, non-related people.
Yeah.
It's true.
Okay, so we have to address that special, those special exceptions.
We could, there are two other additional criteria, which are the facade, including windows, shall be residential in character, and that window signs are not permitted in the windows of residential units. So those are the four criteria that are additionally required to have ground-floor residential in the village commercial. So two of those deal with parking and differentiate. So one way or another, those first two need to be addressed.
Can we just take those two parking things out of the ordinance?
Yeah. Certainly could.
I mean, if it's really relevant.
What did I miss over there? There's a lot of smiling.
I just, I did not mean to, what if you know it all is freezing over this time?
Yeah.
And I just leaned over to Sue and said.
Which person?
You have to bring your coat next time.
I know why. You don't want to sit here anymore.
I'm in snow pants.
I know.
It is really chilly down this end.
No, it's, I have to sit there myself. It's cold.
Yeah, it is a little chilly down this end. I was thinking that the weather was pretty nice.
Are there blankets in there?
She was wearing the exact same thing she wears in December.
Oh, yeah, I see.
In here. So funny.
No, no, I'll, just pick up your chair for a minute.
I got goosebumps going up my neck.
Yeah, you're right on the vent.
I'm like, wow. Chili over there. I was, I was dead over that side anyway. Is it warm or?
I've got a breeze coming right here.
I feel for you.
That's why I have my shirt on.
Oh, much better.
The mat?
There's a mat.
Not the mat.
Oh, my God.
I know, Matt. Back to business.
My water's cold.
Where, okay, where in our, where in our ordinance do we regulate the unrelated people person? Where is that?
That is the definition of family. So we define a dwelling unit, for example, a single-family dwelling unit as a dwelling unit occupied by one family. And then we define family in two different ways, depending on whether that family is related or unrelated. So that's how the town, kind of in an indirect way through definitions, regulates how many unrelated people can live together.
Family related, any number of persons related by blood or by marriage.
I don't, I don't like that.
Well, if.
Yeah. I mean, what.
We have, we have, we have to change it now anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just change it.
Married or not, somebody could change their marital status just to comply. People do crazier things.
That's true.
This is a two occupants per bedroom, pretty much is what it boils down to.
I think we should put some language in here to get at gender, too.
Oh, God.
Okay.
Still?
Sorry.
All right, then. What's next?
Let's move on.
Sure, Joseph, you're satisfied with that one.
Definitely. Let's, let's check out the next one here, which is SB 284. And so I should say, that last piece, that last one we just discussed, goes into effect 60 days after signature. Signature was July 15th. That goes into effect 60 days after July 15th. So.
So we may, there may actually be enforcement activities that have to change before we can change zoning.
Yeah.
Agreed. And it will be a bit of a.
We don't really enforce it anyway, do we?
Well, the town does.
I thought the town was mostly kind of staying quiet in that one because it was an issue.
So it's, I'll say that the town in general is not able to aggressively police how many people live in a dwelling unit all the time and what their status is. I can't say that the town has never taken action, but in practice, it's very hard to enforce or police how many people in a dwelling are related or not. So I can't say the town hasn't taken action, but I can say this is a complicated one to enforce, whether the town wanted to or not.
If somebody really wanted to.
You have to sit outside their door.
There's nothing, I mean, when we talk about family, there's nothing that prevents somebody from hiring a genealogist to go back 10 generations and say, oh, no, we're 32nd, whatever, we're 32nd cousins. Like you could, like, that's family, right? If you go back far enough, we're all family.
True. SB 284.
Seth Matt.
Got some different cloth.
Parking is the, is the main piece of this one. SB 284 states that no more than one parking space may be required for a residential dwelling unit. So implications for Plymouth.
For a single residential dwelling unit.
Correct. So Plymouth currently requires two spaces for most residential uses. ADUs only require one, for example, but we will need to comply. This is a maximum minimum. So it, it says that the town may not require more than one. There are.
We can prohibit on-street parking.
So it doesn't deal directly with on-street parking requirements, because those would be sort of a separate body of regulation. But it does, it is worth noting that last, last year, there were, there was a law change that allowed for off-site parking for residential uses in certain cases. So there may be situations where that, this does interplay with that previous change. But this one, in its most basic form, really just says you can't require more than one.
And many builders will still put in more than one to provide for their people who want that for whatever reasons.
It's a bit of a market control.
Yeah.
But if you have a builder who wants to provide one parking spot, we have to approve them.
Yeah.
And if somebody moves in with a second car, they're going to park on the lawn or find space or be on the sidewalk or wherever it is that we're trying to dissuade them from parking, right?
Right. It could cause issues.
And there are other avenues to deal with that. Like currently in some zones, at least, you're not allowed to park on your lawn, including single-family residential and maybe others.
But could look enforcing that.
You can, though. I mean, it's in there to.
And if you park on your lawn long enough, it's not long.
So there's one, there's one wrinkle in this I would like to point out, which is that our zoning ordinance currently places a cap on the number of parking spaces you can provide in certain zones as it relates to your required amount of parking. And that is a, in certain zones, you are not allowed to have more than 125% of your required number of parking spaces. So this is actually very directly related to this bill because, as written, in the single-family residential zone, you can have a two-family by special exception, but it would require a variance to provide three or four parking spaces for that two-family.
You actually have to get rid of that 125%.
No, or can we simply say that it only applies to, or does not apply to any residential properties?
So that would be the, so I mentioned in my memo that there's a couple of things you could do. You could say that it only applies to non-residential parking facilities, and you could say that it only applies to parking facilities where the requirement is over a certain number of parking spaces. So if you were required 500 spaces, you could, you could still impose this requirement, but you could put a cap on, on the number of spaces.
Where's the 125% parking thing?
It's in Article 4, Section 411, off-street parking. And it states that the, in the CI, VC, HC, or ICD zone, the zoning board of adjustment may grant a special exception for a parking facility with more than 125% of the minimum number of parking spaces under Section 411.2. So you could say that only applies to parking facilities where the requirement would be 40 or more spaces. You could say it only applies to non-residential. You could say it only applies to non-residential where the requirement would be 40 or more. That's, 40, is it just a number?
But if, but if we're now, like, in single-family dwelling detached and attached, two-family dwelling, where it's currently, we require two spaces per dwelling unit, if we have to reduce that to one, and you cannot have more than 125%, that means you can no longer park two cars.
Have one and a quarter parking spaces.
Right.
Which is a challenge. And that 125%.
Kids, spouses. You can have 1.25 cars.
And that 125%.
Can you park a motorcycle on a corner?
Because of very large commercial facilities. So not really intended, I think, for small residential uses. But think Walmart. If their requirement is 600, it really does use up a lot of real estate, create a lot of impervious surface, a lot more ground impact if they were going to provide double what they want, what they were required to provide. So it's really, I think the intention was to prevent way oversized, sort of speculative, commercial parking facilities.
This actually became an issue with the last chair, didn't it? They wanted to provide, like, 200% or something.
Yes.
With what?
The last chair.
Oh, the last chair.
This really doesn't, single-family duplexes, like, it's not meant to.
I think we need to go through Table 411.2, and actually, we're going to have to heavily revise that whole table to comply with this.
Yes, we will need to change all residential uses, and we will need, I believe, to, I think it would be very important to think about that 125%, because as you said, a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling could not provide, say, two.
Yeah, a single family would be a car and a unicycle if you're going by wheels.
A unicycle?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's right.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I think your, I think your comment, John.
I think we need.
Stop writing that.
He's warming up.
Yeah.
This is.
Sorry, Joseph. Sorry.
We're trying, we're, we're trying to make sure that people who actually spend time watching these videos are somewhat amused. Trying to get them some.
Yeah, so that table does need to be reworked. And I don't think it'll be, take much, but to really go through it. And this is effective 60 days out, so.
So, correct. And so there are, there could be scenarios where if someone applies for a residential development, the town theoretically cannot require, though, cannot require more than one space per unit. Though again, in this interim period where our zoning is not updated to comply, it is, we're seeking clarification on the best way to proceed in this intervening period because we just want to be careful that we're acting appropriately. Because as town staff, for example, Tom and myself, we have to be, we generally can't just say the zoning ordinance, we're going to not, not abide by it, not observe it.
So like if somebody comes in, let's say November or whatever, and tries to build a single-family house with two parking spaces.
They can. Well, no.
No, because it would be only one space per unit, but our 125 still applies. Because that's not changed by the, it is not overridden.
Right.
So what do you do then? Do you just overlook it and like ignore the zoning ordinance because it's absurd? Or do you get a variance, which hopefully would be granted because it's a extenuating circumstance of some sort?
Or does the zoning ordinance, from the town perspective, do we say the zoning ordinance still applies, but you don't have to follow it? I mean, we're seeking some clarification on this, and I hope we'll, we'll know more soon because this is very hot off the presses. And this inter, once we get, you know, once we get to the point where these are in effect, but there is no zoning amendment that actually makes our zoning comply with these, it will be a little bit of a strange situation.
I mean, it'll mean like almost everyone's house will be non-compliant.
Well.
Which is fine, because they're grandfathered.
I know.
Existing non-conforming uses can continue.
I would hope they would have taken this into consideration. So they should have an answer for you.
Yeah, we'll definitely try to get some clarity.
Do you think the House of Representatives took this into consideration?
You should.
Or not the House of Representatives, the State House, whatever.
Non-conforming uses can be.
You're very optimistic.
That's all.
So, yeah, the, the big picture, though, I think we, the easy part of this is we need to change that table of parking requirements so that we don't require more than one space per residential unit in any case. And then we need to think about the 125% requirement and certainly.
Tailoring it.
Yeah, there are a lot of ways we could, we could kind of address that and make it not unworkable or practically impossible to, to.
It makes sense in many scenarios, but not in this one.
Right. And I think that's why, just specifically thinking about how it applies, what it applies to is really kind of going to be.
Given the cost of asphalt and site work, I'm not sure that there are many businesses that are going to be eager to build 200% of their required parking. Like, parking is expensive.
Yeah. And it's usually billed, and when building out, it's what's the minimum amount of parking I need to do this.
But as we've seen, though, there are like restaurants that say, like, wow, we could be slammed and like, we want to have extra parking. And we, and we had, we had an application come that tried to do that.
I think it makes sense to have someone.
Which is dirt, not paid, so it makes sense.
Fair enough.
The estimators are already there.
The other day I went to Walmart and the parking lot was full. I had to park out by the automotive.
That's wild.
Really?
That's really crazy.
Couldn't find a place to park.
Was it that hot day? They were probably trying to get a seat.
I was hanging out inside. I mean, kind of.
I wouldn't dare that. I turned around, went home. I'm not even going in there.
You should sell the seat. It's a hot day.
It's really fun.
In all of an hour.
It's really hot to go to Walmart?
I'm sure that.
I don't know what they think.
No, I'm sure plenty of people do that.
All right.
We'll be right along. Joseph needs to get this done.
The library, there was, cooling center was open.
Sure, yeah. I can move on to the next one if you'd like.
Do you have enough guidance on where you think we'll be taking this from more?
Definitely. I can give some, I can give some, put some time into giving the board back something for food for thought, if the board would like that. We can also talk about that after, how the board, if the board wants to kind of talk about these, think about them a little more before we start drafting, or if you want, based on this discussion, a really high-level draft that the board can kind of accept, push back on, work with. Either way is, is fine. But the next one is two bills that I've included together because they deal with the same RSA, which is 674:41. And this is the, this is the section of state law that deals with building or development on non-planning board and, non-planning board private roads and Class 6 roads. So for those who aren't aware, maybe in the community or anything like that, a Class 6 road is a public way, a town right-of-way, town road, that the town has no obligation or ability really to maintain or keep passable. So it is, it is a public way, but it is not maintained in any way. So occasionally, folks do want to build on these roads. And under the statute previously, the process for building on these types of roads required first getting a review and comment from the planning board, and then going to the select board. And the select board actually had to authorize building. That is no longer the process. Once all that happened, under the old version of the RSA, the applicant had to record a waiver of liability at the registry of deeds alongside their deed that says they waive all municipal liability for police, fire, ambulance, road maintenance, bus service, and acknowledging that they know that those are not guaranteed services for building on a Class 6 road. This new law says, basically, you don't have to go through the planning board or select board. As long as you file that waiver at the registry of deeds, you can build on a Class 6 road. You just have to waive that municipal liability.
Still need a building permit.
You do, yep. But it wouldn't be reviewed by the select board. And so the other piece is the non-planning board private roads, which are treated distinctly under the statute from planning board-approved private roads. So planning board-approved private roads were a part of a subdivision. The planning board reviewed them against the subdivision road specs, Reservoir Heights, Chatterin Lane, Crescent Street. Those are planning board-approved private roads. There are some private roads in New Hampshire, even in Plymouth, not many, but a few, that predate any of those processes, and they are often hard to define. They're often old. They really go back a ways. But under the previous statute, you had to go through the same process for those as you did for Class 6 roads. Under this new change, it's actually a very subtle change for this one. Instead of going to the plant, so historically, you go to the planning board, you get a review and comment, then you go to the select board, they have to approve your building permit, and then you have to record the waiver. This says, instead of going to the planning board first, the select board could adopt a policy under which they approve building permits on these old pre-planning board private roads. Then you would just go straight to the select board. They would review your request, not against the advice of the planning board, but against their own adopted policy. And then they could approve you or deny you, and then you would record your waiver.
Can you back up a little bit? Talk, say, talk again about subdivisions on these roads.
So subdivision on these roads is a really interesting question. And these roads, by definition, are not roads that were approved as part of a subdivision or were built to subdivision spec. So if a subdivision request came in on one of these private roads, the planning board would need to review that as if there was a brand-new road being constructed typically. So you would need to review, because these are roads, but they're not roads that were built to any spec established by the town. The right-of-way may or may not be defined.
What if it's an existing private road and somebody's just cutting lots off of it? None of those lots technically have any frontage. We, I mean, if they're, if they're not on a public road, they don't need frontage requirements, right?
Well, it's a, it's a, that is often the case in Plymouth. We, frontage can be on a private road in Plymouth, but.
Can it?
It, it can.
Okay.
As written. As written. So if you, you have to go to the definition of frontage.
Okay.
And I'll pull that up, which is, which is a complication with this and really needs to be considered. Because that does have implications if someone had a lot with, uh, limited, uh, frontage. So frontage is defined as the width of a lot measured along its common boundary with the street line. And so street line is defined as right-of-way line of a street dedicated by a deed of record. Where the width of the street is not established, the street line shall be considered to be twenty-five feet from the center line of street pavement. So it doesn't specify that the street line has to be along a public way. But under subdivision regulations, if you're subdividing, the frontage has to be on a road that meets subdivision spec unless you get a waiver, which the planning board does have the jurisdiction to grant waivers and has granted waivers certainly in the past. So if someone brought in a subdivision request on an old deeded right-of-way that they were calling a private road, that was an old private road, that was only twenty feet wide, that doesn't meet, the road access to those lots may not meet subdivision regulations. So unless they got a waiver for, say, the width of the right-of-way, it wouldn't meet subdivisions back. But it, it may meet the zoning, uh, or the lots may meet the zoning. The other thing that's important to think about here is that if a subdivision were proposed on a class six road, currently, there would still generally need to be that select board approval process.
I, I thought the planning board still had authority over, over subdivisions on class six roads.
They do. But the, the building on those lots that were, the subdivided lots would be under this new process. Kind of expedited.
So subdivision can still be limited on class six roads?
It would have to, so yes, it can be if the planning board determines that such subdivision would be scattered and premature, which the board does have.
Which is, which is in statute.
Right, it is. And the board has the authority to say, this would be scattered and premature to allow this subdivision. But the board would have to be really thoughtful if such a development were proposed about making sure that we really go through whether or not it is scattered and premature, for example, or whether it could be enabling pretty intensive development along class six road. I mean, it's also worth thinking about the class six roads that exist in town. What's the zoning along them? Where are they located?
Do we have any of these non-planning board approved private roads?
I'm aware of one, Thompson Farm Lane, um, which is off Quincy Road. We may recall, there was a boundary line adjustment a few years ago out there.
Yeah.
That's the only one I'm aware of.
It was a hot button issue. It was for, there was a lot for sale for a while, a couple of years ago.
It was quite a.
It was controversial.
It was. And that, that boundary line adjustment was, because the lot actually seemed to have no frontage.
Yeah.
So they adjusted the boundary to give it frontage along this old pre-planning board private road. So it could have been built upon under this statute, but not.
So I, I want to come back to the class six roads and building on class six roads. So many towns have incremental development standards that are enforced by the select board where if, in the past, you could, you would have to go to the select board and say, I'd like to build on this class six road. I own the next parcel past the last house that was built. And if you, they would allow incremental development up a class six road to the next undeveloped parcel. And if that one was developed, then the next parcel could be developed. So my understanding of this now is that anybody who has an existing lot on a class six road can build on it regardless of the incremental previous lots, right? So somebody with a two-acre lot in the middle, middle of Binks Hill Road could now plop a house down on it and say,
Yep.
I'm, I'm just gonna use this class six road as my driveway.
As long as they waive municipal liability and record that waiver, then yes, that, that's accurate. Effective, effective in sixty days from July fifteenth. And so this is a policy that is, uh, in part carried out by the planning board. It doesn't, this doesn't actually reside in zoning, but the planning board has a role in it, or used to have a role in this process. Um, and that, the reason I bring it up as having implications for the planning board is because generally, it will change how these items, which traditionally have gone before the planning board, will likely not as often anymore. Unless it's a, not, a pre-planning board private road, in which case they may still go before the planning board. Unless the select board were to adopt a policy that says otherwise.
So we, we did have a subdivision approval, some, a request for subdivision on a class six road last year. So if that came back to us, we would still, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be forced to change that decision.
I think so, yeah. It was the width of the road, but that was the big, was that the big hangup on the stuff?
It was, they didn't have frontage. I mean, they would have, they wanted to use the road as it was.
Yeah, so they didn't.
As a private road, basically.
Right. They didn't have frontage on a road that met subdivision spec.
Right.
Um, which, if it were a public road, arguably, it would not have had to. That is an improved public street. It wasn't an existing improved public street. The road, however, didn't meet subdivision spec for, um, things like the traveled way width, the right-of-way width. So that was kind of the key.
And we told them that and it never came back.
Yeah.
They got it.
If that would come back, under this new regulation, how would that look?
Arguably similar, except that.
Cause it's, it's the subdivision that they were saying, I mean, they could still put a house on the one lot.
Yep.
It's just a three.
Yeah.
Unless the planning board waived things like road width, things like the drainage.
They do multiple units on a single lot.
Well, if it's allowed under zoning, then I would say that there is nothing in this law that limits which uses you can build, as long as you have that waiver.
Right.
So it is important to think about what the zoning of these class six roads are because of that lack, there's no caveat. It doesn't say one single-family home. It says, you may build. Now, a special exception, if something's a special exception, would you be likely to get approved for a special exception on a class six road for intensive development? Probably not so likely, but if it's something that, you know, it, it, it doesn't rule out the possibility.
So my only, I think this is fine in, in most ways. And cause they're basically signing their rights away anyway to any public services.
Yep.
My only concern would be like in a larger subdivision or even multiple units on a single lot, that owners can sometimes be deceptive and realtors have either been uninformed or deceptive in the past. For example, up on like the, the hill over there, where they were saying you're on public, you know, utilities and you weren't.
Right.
Oh, it's wrong.
Yeah. And I don't know if there's any way of triggering like an enforcement that like all residents need to be informed that they're living under these circumstances.
That's, I mean, is.
Because like, let's say you own a property with multiple units on a single lot and you rent out one of those units to someone else. I don't know that you're mandated to tell your renter that they have no services. And that they can't call, or they can call an ambulance, but they might not come. And that would be my biggest concern. Like, I say, fine, if you want to waive your rights, great. But what about if you are in, like with multiple families or something on, on a lot or multiple units on a single lot, does everyone have to know and agree to these same conditions? I don't think they do as long as the owner does.
The, um.
And.
I don't know how you can enforce. I mean, that's.
It's, it's a concern, though. If like, if you, if you rent from somebody and you don't even know this, cause they didn't tell you, right? And you die because an ambulance can't get to you.
Eastern Corners, that was a huge issue. Well, they weren't a renter, it was the homeowner, but the ambulance went across the bridge.
What are you talking about?
It was ten or fifteen years ago in Canton. There's a section in Canton about eastern corners. And it's a class six road with houses past it. And there's two bridges that go across it.
And the ambulance couldn't cross.
On the other side of the bridge in one of the houses, and the ambulance would have crossed the bridge. But they were notified, they said, hey, if something happens out here, we're not coming across that bridge.
The, the ambulance won't, they might walk.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like the.
Yeah, but it's slow.
And this was before.
I think they put in a new bridge, didn't they?
No, they're still the existing old bridges.
So the town of Bradford, before, before I was on that planning board, the, it was like the year before I came on that planning board, they approved a subdivision where there was a private bridge that served a single lo, house. And then they, they subdivided that other lot into three. Uh, the, the developer, the owner provided a waiver that said, you know, we, we understand that fire service, fire and ambulance service may not be available. And recorded that on the deeds. And one of the buyers of one of those parcels sued the town and the developer and won.
What?
It, so waivers are not always like, so someone who bought a parcel
Yeah.
that was accessible across that bridge, even though there was a deed restriction that, that was, that, that clearly stated, you know, ambulance and fire service may not be available at your home. They would get to the bridge and use off-highway firefighting equipment as much as they could, but like, they can't get an ambulance to your driveway if there's a medical issue. Like, the homeowners sued the town and, and won.
Interesting.
How?
I wonder how, if it was in their deed.
Yeah, how?
I wonder how, if it was in their deed.
Yeah, how do they? So the, the court, the court found that like the agreement between the town and the developer.
Also went back to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what, they made him build the bridge or some, change it till they could?
I don't know what the story was. I don't know if the developer had to buy the house back from the people, what the deal was. Yeah, okay.
So it was the original deal between the town?
It was a private bridge that wasn't rated. It wasn't engineered. I mean, if, if they put in a bridge that was engineered to road standards and met the E-two rating, like they could drive, the fire department would drive a fire truck across it.
Right.
But, but if, if you have a private bridge, there's no obligation to, to endanger public fire protection equipment to go over it. I, I mean, that's not that different than these class six roads.
Making sure that the waiver legally states and the, the waiver, that's where they went back to.
But if, if this is in statute, it, it has to be, I mean, as long as somebody signs that waiver, that's, if it's in statute, it's now protected.
Hopefully must.
But I mean, a, a bridge might be different, too.
This is also, the, the, the good part about this is without having the select board approve it, that liability might not fall on the town anymore.
That's true. Yeah.
So I was just looking, I, I know there are a couple of class six roads. There's Chase On Road, there's Binks Hill Road. I don't see many lots on Binks Hill Road, but Pike Hill has a ton of existing lots. And now they'll be able to get building permits out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Regardless. Like, there's, there's a couple dozen lots on Pike Hill Road.
It's been, it's a busy spot.
And the end of Thurlow Street is the other one that, that passed the portion.
You mean Old Stagecoach?
Stagecoach?
So, yes, Old Stagecoach Road and Thurlow Street Extension are not exactly the same road.
Yeah, no, Stagecoach is like here.
Right. So Old Stagecoach Road was built as a part of an agreement to allow folks to get building permits with their frontage being on a class six road. So their frontage legally is on the class six portion of Thurlow Street Extension, but their access is via a privately built and maintained, uh, Old Stagecoach Road, which was built to a certain spec. And so it was a part of a agreement, basically, to get those building permits between the select board and the, and the owners. And this was many years ago.
May I ask a tangential question, Chair? Since we seem to be going tangentially anyway.
Can you continue with this comment? Please continue one more.
Oh, you have more?
I think that's, no, no, that's good. Yeah.
Please, please.
There, there was a petition going around a couple of years ago, or maybe more, to change the name of Thurlow Street.
Really?
Did, did, did that die and like never go anywhere, I guess?
I have, I, I had heard that there was some discussion about it and I never heard anything further.
Okay.
Um, so I'm guessing, no, I, I don't know, though. I, I don't have any, any information on the status of that.
I know it was, it was controversial among some people.
Oh, yeah.
Like, people felt really strongly, like both.
Why did they want to change the name of it?
What's that?
Why did they want to change?
Yeah, why?
They wanted to change it to, I think, to Old Stagecoach Road, like the whole way.
Oh, yeah. Cause it's like Thurlow's here and then it becomes Stagecoach here.
Yeah.
Thurlow is just basically from Warren Street and then Langdon, that intersection of Texas Hill, Langdon, Warren.
And then there were others who really felt strongly about like the Thurlow family and so.
Oh, I see.
And so it, and it, and it was like a big discussion for a while, then it kind of died out, died out and never heard about it again. I, I guess it didn't go anywhere.
I don't have any information on it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, sorry to go on a tangent, but like, I teamed up plenty of them tonight.
So next on the list, if you're, if you're all set to, to move along. Of course, of course. So, House Bill four, one, three, vesting and timeline for active and substantial development. This one is a little bit, uh, in the weeds, but right now, under state law, as long as you begin active and substantial development, imagining a site plan, this is really where this mostly applies, on a site plan that's approved by the planning board, if you begin active and substantial development within two years of your approval, your project is vested against changes in the zoning for five years. So this law changes that. If you begin active and substantial development within three years, your project is vested against changes in zoning for seven years. So that's, that's change number one. And that, we do mirror that language in our site plan review regulations. We, we would need to update that to comply. A planning board, uh, can amend the site plan regs, but those, those currently use the two-year, five-year, and they, they would need to be updated to three, seven. And interesting note about that part, this applies retroactively to any approval granted on or after July first, twenty twenty-three.
Wow.
Jesus.
Wow.
There is a project approved, uh, before that, uh, or I suppose I should say after that, that was, say, two-year, that was within that two-year period. They may potentially have another year to begin active and substantial development and then get a seven-year vest.
This would be the hotel.
Hotel we approve, like if they decided not to start construction of the, like, they, they've started active and substantial because they've done site work, but they haven't.
The site work was actually a separate site plan.
Yeah.
True.
So they have some more time to.
Didn't they revise it when they came to us with the hotel?
Are they gonna move forward?
No, they didn't.
I haven't heard anything to the contrary.
They still have time.
But, I, I mean, that, that site plan revision that we approved for the hotel, like they, they could extend that out ten years now. If, if they came, you know, if we change zoning in that area, they have until ten years to build what they had proposed before, like, if, if they went to year eleven, we could say, oh, no, you didn't build it right. And now you have to change the zoning.
And the other.
That's crazy.
The other note is that it doesn't deal with the conditions. So we do have a, right now, our timeline is you have one year to meet your conditions and then two years to begin active and substantial. So it doesn't mention a timeline for meeting of conditions. So if someone didn't meet, but the planning board can always impose different timelines at the time of approval. The planning board could say, you have three years, uh, cause that's out of site plan, not out of state law.
So is the attempt here to address the fact that like, conditions, it takes the same amount of time now as it did like ten years ago for pretty much to meet your conditions. Whereas there's been a lot of developers complaining about cost overruns and lack of certain supplies. And this kind of covers them for that for some very long period of time now, um, to actually get all that together. I assume that's why.
You mean like a supply chain issue?
Yeah. So I, I, I'm guessing that's why they wouldn't change meeting conditions, which is not affected by that. But they would change development time.
Could be. And, you know, it's, um, the other piece of this law, which is, again, a little bit into the weeds, but is important. In communities where the zoning board of adjustment serves as the building code board of appeals, which is the case here in Plymouth, if you have a building code dispute, you would appeal that to the zoning board. That is now only the case if you are appealing a building code decision related to a local amendment, a state building code. Any other building code appeals now go to the state building code review board. So that's, that's a pretty significant change.
Wow.
So they have to leave Plymouth to go?
They have to go to the state BCB, BCRB. And whereas previously.
That was defunded.
No, the housing appeals board was defunded.
Yes.
The building code.
No, not completely. They, they partially defunded it. So now there's two members, which is a great number of people to have on a board that has to make decisions.
Two. Don't, don't sidetrack.
Two, wow.
But yeah, it's, uh, it's certainly a change. And right now, I, I'd have to, I'd have to defer to Tom, but I'm not aware of any locally adopted amendments to the state building code. I don't.
We, we could. I mean, the, the, the Energy Commission debated proposing an amendment similar to what Durham does, which is that as soon as an energy code is published, it becomes code for the town.
Yeah, we could.
Because, because the building code review board regularly shoots holes in the effectiveness of energy regulations. The towns like Durham have said, whatever code is for the energy code at the time becomes code for this town as soon as it's published. So, I mean, there, there are numerous amendments to the adoption of the building code that the state adopts that. that make it less effective. And towns can choose to stick to the model code. So that, that's one thing that wouldn't be appealed to this building code review board. You know, that's an example of something that could be adopted by town that wouldn't be, but anything else that's in code, like, would be.
And that's a pretty, you know, although I will say, in the time that I've been here, which is one or four years, we've, we haven't had a single building code appeal. So I don't know that this will be used a lot, but the times that it would be used, it is a, it is a change. Other, and I do need to note that other administrative appeals related to the zoning ordinance, for example, still appealable to the zoning board. This is specifically building code appeals.
I had, I had a debate with Tom last summer about a state building code issue that I might have, had I known this, I might have, if this, if it happened again, I might have gone to the building code review board with it.
And, you know, it would be effective immediately because the the law went into effect July first of twenty twenty five.
Interesting.
Um, and was signed on the fifteenth, so it it is in effect now. And I'm happy to, folks want to discuss that.
No, that's, that's, I don't, I don't, that's not going to have much of impact on us, but it's interesting to know.
Change something.
It's a big shift that I think will have minimal. Minimal impact big shift.
It takes a lift off, it takes responsibility off the shoulders of the Z B A. Puts it on the state building code review board.
Do we have to edit our legislation anyway for that?
I do not believe we need to make any zoning changes because.
We don't deal with building codes.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, building code, um, so it's under statute, um, that building code appeals go to the zoning, or it was under statute that they go to the zoning board unless you have a separate standing local designated building code review board. And if you don't have a zoning board, the statute says it becomes the select board. So this is kind of a already, it's not our zoning ordinance that delegates them that authority, it's the statute, so it kind of.
So but that little, that was just part of this House bill?
Yep, it was. And it, um, the the part that we do have to think about is the timelines that we have in our site plan regs.
So we have to go from two to three, two, two, five to three, seven. Is that correct?
Yep.
That is.
But not with conditions. So.
Right.
Mountain Village Charter School, that wouldn't have changed.
Well, they've already withdrawn.
Or both, yeah, but just for a reason.
And in some ways, I'm just thinking about it, I mean, at least right now in the last few years, we have had, like, applicants say, like, I need a little bit more time.
Yeah.
Because of supply chain issues and stuff like that. And some planning boards might say no. And it kind of doesn't let them say no.
We've been generous about granting extensions.
And so it seems like a very long time, but, I mean, we've been doing this in practice and it it makes sure that everyone does this in practice. As opposed to saying, no, too bad, you have supply chain issues, that's your problem? Yeah.
Chad.
All right, so I'll go over, the next things are very much informational. I don't have a great deal to to report on them yet, um, but I do, they are relevant, so I will quickly mention them. S B one eighty eight allows licensed or certified third parties to certify documents and inspect buildings in compliance with applicable building and other codes. S B two eighty two amends the building code to allow residential buildings up to four stories to have only one stairway under certain conditions. S B one ten provides for expedited alteration of terrain permitting process for certain projects and amends the associated fees. And then H B ninety two requires an individual who is a member of both the planning board and zoning board, which we don't have currently, but have in the past, to recuse themselves from Z B A decisions which pertain to an item that that individual has previously deliberated on as a member of the planning board.
Allows or requires?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, requires them to recuse themselves.
Okay, so so zoning board has no alternates, let's say.
Hypothetically, yeah.
Hypothetically. And a case that went to the planning board now goes to the zoning board. And a zoning board member has to recuse. But by law, the applicant is able to postpone a hearing indefinitely if they don't have a full board.
A full board?
Yeah.
Or a court.
No, a full board.
A full board.
Board.
True. The board has to offer that if an individual wants to wait, because you need three votes, even if there are only four members there, it's not a simple majority, it's a majority of the zoning board. So if you have three people there, you need three votes, not two on the zoning board. So you do have a right as an applicant. And the zoning board will always offer, if you don't have a full five members or, you know, four and an alternate, a total of five people hearing your case, you do have the right to wait, basically, until you get a full board.
Wow. So the Z B A would have to appoint, if there were, if 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 somebody came to the planning board and heard something and we referred them to the Z B A for a variance or a special exception, and there was a planning board member and there was no alternate, they would have to get a new member.
That's wild.
Yeah.
Unless that applicant, I mean, the applicant, to think about it from their perspective, wouldn't get their, uh, decision either. It would extend their timeline as well. So it may be in their interest to be heard by four members of the Z B A in that case, but it doesn't.
But if they chose to move ahead and only got two yes votes, they, it can't be reheard either, right?
Right, that is correct. So if you.
Z B A cannot rehear something they've decided on.
Right, and you cannot, um, if the zoning board offers it to you or or says that you do not have a full board tonight, would you like to go forward? If you go forward with less than a full board, the decision or that factor cannot be grounds for an appeal. You can't appeal because you only got two.
Wow.
If you, if you've been offered that, that choice, um, and you choose to go forward anyway, it's basically understanding that that's not going to be your grounds for appeal. It can't be. Um, you can still, it doesn't mean you can't appeal a decision for other reasons, but.
That can't be grounds for, yeah.
Feels like a pet project, it's law.
So this.
Someone has that experience or something.
If someone were a member of the planning board and the zoning board, and there was a hearing coming up where they knew it was going to go to the Z B A, they could recuse themselves from the planning, from the hearing, from the planning board, so they could serve on the zoning board. But you'd have to have that foresight to know, like, hey, clearly this application is going to require a variance. I'm going to sit out so that I can sit on the Z B A when it comes in.
Like three lakes, right, with their accessory structures?
Right, right.
Yep.
I think that's a, it's a good example. And we did, so I I bring this up because we don't have one now, but we have had members in the past who serve on both. I mean, until fairly recently, we had Peter Julia on both boards, and it's, it's not uncommon.
I can imagine appealing a decision. Like, let's say you go to the zoning board and you get a decision you don't like, but you went with a four person zoning board because you felt pressured, because they couldn't actually provide you with a five person zoning board. So you went with it out of like a pressure because it's the only way to do it. And then you get the, you don't get the decision you want. That might be grounds for appeal.
Yeah, they had the opportunity. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. Yeah, I mean, could, I mean, someone can appeal under any grounds.
You have to wait indefinitely.
Well, someone doesn't, someone can appeal a decision of the zone, they can say anything they want in their request for a rehearing, but I don't think that my read of the law leaves any wiggle room for if you feel pressured, to be honest, but.
Like, there's, there's like, no way to actually get a full board.
I I would like to say that Senate Bill one eighty eight that allows licensed or certified third parties to certify documents and inspect buildings is a very good thing for small towns. In my experience, there are many small towns that do not have code enforcement because they can't afford to keep a code enforcement officer on, so they just don't do inspections. Which means they basically don't have zoning, or they don't have building code, building codes in those towns. Like, I I've been to homes that people have built and seen problems and deficiencies, and the homeowners have said, well, who do I sue? Like, well, did the town give you a building permit? Like, yeah. Good luck. Like, you know, because New Hampshire doesn't require licenser of contractors, so you can get Joe Blow, who doesn't know what he's doing, to build a house and like, you can sue him, but he can claim, you know, file bankruptcy and be in, still be in business tomorrow under a different business name. Like, like, it's, this, so this allows small towns to, so like, the way that towns use assessing services now, you could have building inspection services available that towns could talk, contract out. I think it's actually a good thing.
Makes sense. And then, um, old Joe Blow, the last, the last piece here.
Ad car.
Three ninety nine created, and this one is a little more abstract, but is is potentially quite impactful. Created a commission to study and recommend potential revisions to the New Hampshire zoning enabling legislation. So there is, as, as we've discussed, the the authority to zone in New Hampshire comes from state law. The the reason municipalities can enforce zoning is because state law allows, authorizes them to. This commission will be studying the the law that grants the power to zone to towns and potentially recommending revisions to that, that core grant of power, which.
Do we know who's on this commission yet?
I don't, I don't have that information.
I suspect they will be appointed.
Jason Soren's.
I don't know who's going to be on the committee or if that has been released. I haven't seen it. But it is, there is a, I mean, there is a structure outlined, I think, in the statute that says, not the individuals who will be on the committee, but kind of what the makeup of the committee will be. I can find that if you'd like.
Well.
So that, that one really is not any direct impact today, but is certainly the implication for future, uh, potential, uh, further zoning changes to come.
One person from the zoning outlets project.
Court.
I can see why.
I'm being sarcastic enough.
Let's see if it says. So it says, four members of the House of Representatives appointed by the Speaker of the House in consultation with the House Minority Leader, no more than two from the same political party. Two members of the Senate appointed by the President of the Senate in consultation with the Minority Leader of the Senate, no more than one from the same political party. One designated from the judicial branch appointed by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. I assume that's of New Hampshire. Uh, two national housing policy experts appointed by the Speaker of the House in consultation with the Minority Leader of the House. One member representing municipal governments appointed by the President of the Senate in consultation with the Minority Leader of the Senate. One member of the public appointed by the President of the Senate in consultation with the Minority Leader of the Senate.
And no planners.
One member of the public.
And no, no planners.
One member, that's the one.
Yeah.
Who's going to be the one member of the public?
No.
Wow, that's the end of my list.
That is a very extensive list. Thank you for pulling that together. I think we're waiting for several of these to be signed, and as they have now been, we can now move forward with, um, what we want to do with them. I think, the ones we need to make changes on for town meeting. How does everyone feel? Do we want to see a synopsis from Joseph for each one from what we discussed tonight? And have that come back to us to sort of say, this is the rough draft.
I think that's worked well in the past. That's worked well in the past.
Can we package all of the required changes into one?
Giant warrant.
Warrant article that says this warrant article, if approved, will update the following elements of zoning in alignment with required legislation and just be like this, you know, the town, like even if it's different topics.
Yep, we can do that. We do have to say generally what those changes will be, so we could say.
It's going to be like an omnibus zoning change, but I think it would make sense to just put it all into one so that it's less controversial. People are going to vote for it.
Yeah, no reason you couldn't have them all in one. In the, in the question and the warrant, you will have to say changing A D U's, changing commercially, you know, commercials, but you, you can't sort of say it just changes to comply with state law. It has to describe kind of the things that are changing, but it.
The introduction can say, all of these, all of these changes to zoning are to comply with, you know, required updates to the RSAs. These are the changes, you know, A D U's, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
I love the fact that like.
And when we're talking about them too, like, you know, we have our list of, uh, topics of twenty twenty five. This whole list of the state law, changes because of state law, you know?
I I love the fact that whenever we put forward a zoning amendment that's simply to comply with state law, that's going to be, it's going to apply regardless of whether we pass a zoning amendment. There's always like seventy or eighty people who vote against it anyway.
Just because.
Just because it's a zoning amendment, it's like, no.
You know? You're having your say, having your say. I get it.
Hey, Joseph, so I think if you do want to start working those together.
Sounds good.
The omnibus. We've had enough discussion tonight with this.
Yeah.
Or you probably have a good enough idea of a starting point and then we can go from there.
Yeah, that's great. And then I'll, should be for the next work session that isn't dedicated to housing's master plan chapter. I'll try to have that ready and the board can take it from there and see what you like, what you don't like.
It'll be September.
I do believe so, yeah, because the next, uh, work session, uh, we do have, I mean, unless the board wanted to try to do both, but we do have Judy Barrett coming in to to begin some work on the housing master plan chapter project.
Gotta go.
And she is working on a plan.
Gotta shut this thing off.
Have an update soon, I imagine.
Okay. Right, because we have the August seventh meeting, but we don't have anything or an agenda for that yet regarding what she'll be presenting for us or bringing.
No, I did reach out, but she said that she is kind of hammering out the details. And I imagine we'll be hearing more soon. But I, September is kind of the, there was an idea of putting out some kind of survey in the timeline, so I imagine that will be a part of this, and also kicking off the conversation with the public. Kicking off some of those engagement things. So certainly, if if you know folks who are interested and want to hear kind of a discussion about where things are going to go and where community engagement is going to go, I don't think it would be a bad meeting to attend, um, to to hear more about the housing master plan chapter project and learn about what good opportunities for engagement will be, will be following that. Not that it's a community meeting itself, but it will be open to the public. And I I do think, from the sound of it, it's probably a, probably a good one for the public to attend if they're interested.
Any planning board member, any planning board meeting, community, community meeting, if the community shows up.
That's true, true, absolutely.
Or if they watch on YouTube.
Or that, or that, thank you. Well, actually, no, but that's not really a community meeting, if they watch on Zoom.
True.
If I can participate.
So circling back to short term rentals from sort of our meeting with the Z B A. Do we want to make a decision right now to add this? Add short term rentals to our zoning memo list? Or do we want to wait until we meet with Judy again to see where that is sort of going to be baked in and folds into the housing project master plan?
I personally think it would be premature to start making changes that are pretty big in some ways. If they're short term rentals, they have a big impact without hearing from the public first. And I think that's the point of the housing master plan is to hear from the public. And short term rentals are a commercial use, really, but they obviously impact housing. So I personally would, short term rentals have been around for a long time, and I wouldn't want to rush into it. I don't think, I don't think it's an emergency. I personally just want to wait and get feedback from the public before making any decisions.
They've been in existence long before V O B O and you're going to be called the city agency.
Yeah.
Rent a house for a week.
Yeah.
In your area. Okay, is everyone in consensus with that? Feel any difference here?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to delve into any of the priority projects for this year's zoning amendments? For example, Tenny Mountain Overlay, it is nine o'clock. Do we feel like we want to complete for the night? Where does everyone sit on this?
I would, I would move that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting. I I think we've done a good amount tonight. I don't, I think any work we do on this might be strained. I think the work we've done on these topics in the past has been strained, and I don't think we've moved forward adequately. It's July, you know, we have a couple of months to really focus on this.
I I would also add to that, that I actually, I actually feel pretty confident, um, with most of what we have down at this point.
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
And I think there might be some tweaking, but I don't really see any huge changes on the.
On the Tenny.
Based on our discussions that I've heard, I don't know.
I, the one thing I've thought of with like the Tenny Mountain Overlay district, I don't know where it folds in, if we already have it folded in, is, um, environmental impact. I don't know where it folds in, if we already have it folded in, is environmental impact on a grand scheme, you know?
We have to do that anyway, I think.
That's what I'm sort of was like wondering, well, you know, we can-
We can add extra regulations.
Save for delving this into it, if we wanted to delve into it tonight, or save it for-
If you want to talk more about that, I would like to do it later.
And I think that's one of my questions.
Yeah, I, I don't mind talking about those again, but I think, we've had our share of late meetings, I'm not sure that-
Yeah.
-there's anything so pressing that we need to be late tonight.
I seconded that motion.
Oh, you did?
Motion on the floor.
I did not, I'm sorry.
We're discussing the motion.
I didn't hear the motion.
Well, there's no further discussion. We have a motion in a second. What was the motion for on-
It was not really a motion.
He's been here too long already.
Move to adjourn?
No, 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 I, no.
We have a motion on the floor.
I think it was-
Economic Development Committee membership.
That's the last thing.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I will, I will, we have a motion on the floor, so my move to adjourn is not valid, but we, yeah, no, the, the motion was to put these items off.
Neil made another motion.
Okay.
Well, moving on to the Economic Development Committee membership discussion, Joseph, do you want to fire us off on this one?
Absolutely. So the Select Board at, not this most recent meeting, but at a previous meeting, as well as myself and Scott, had a, had a conversation about kicking off this new renewed Economic Development Committee effort. And I did mention this, I believe, at a previous meeting, but it's more fully formed now, the Select Board has, and perhaps you've seen this in the newsletter or on the website, the Select Board has put out a call, they're officially seeking members for the Economic Development Committee. And this is going to be a subcommittee of the Select Board comprised of two planning board members, two select board members, and three members of the public. So essentially, the, the question to the planning board is, which, who on the planning board would like to, to fill those planning board spots? The, the purpose of the committee, you know, is still early, you know, we're still in the early stages of it, but certainly there's been a lot of interest on the Select Board end, and there's been a lot of support for this effort. And I think, you know, from a planning board perspective, the town's master plan has an entire section on economic development, set many recommendations, and I think the exercise that we did with the housing recommendations of the master plan with Judy, you know, revisiting those, it's been seven, eight years since the, those goals were adopted. How do we feel about the economic development recommendations in the master plan? Are they spot on, still keep working on them? Are they all accomplished? Or are there things we think, we, we might be missing something here? And I think starting, starting with the, starting at the beginning, you know, is, is really going to be key, as well as kind of, you know, engaging in a process that is starting with feedback from the community as well, business community, business leaders, residents, and other folks. Because there are a lot of resources for economic development in this state and even in this region, we, I think it's, it's wise to avoid the, the risk of rushing in and creating some new redundant system when there's already a service being provided by Grafton County Regional Development, or the State Department of Business and Economic Affairs, or one of these other many organizations, the Small Business Administration, New Hampshire Life Sciences, New Hampshire Tech Alliance. I mean, part of this might be building bridges. But all, all that being said, my sense of the read I got from the Select Board, and I think what seems to make sense from some of the conversations we've had is, you know, start at the ground level and, and see where the community, the business community, and, you know, the master plan suggests going. And perhaps there's even an opportunity to tie in work of this Economic Development Committee to work that the planning boards discussed with a more comprehensive master plan revision in the near future, because that will include, of course, updating the economic development section, and, and having a group that's thinking about that could be, could be quite valuable.
Tempting the village commercial as well.
Definitely.
May I ask a question about the committee and how, what, typically, a standing committee, board commission, et cetera, is made up of town residents. Subcommittees can sometimes be made up like the HOP committee of non-residents who are stakeholders in some way and have an important voice.
Yes.
Like non-resident business owners.
Exactly. Select Board member, or Joseph, do you know what the guidelines are for this committee?
So there is, so here's what I'll say. There's nothing in the text of the committee charter that says, you must be a registered voter of Plymouth, though I do think that the Select Board, my, my sense was that the Select Board felt that it was important to hear from residents and that there might be a, you know, the Select Board is ultimately going to appoint those members of the public, and they're going to look at what those people can bring to the committee. And I think that will be an important factor. But it's not explicitly written that you are 100% excluded if you're not a resident.
Okay.
That would be up to the Select Board to decide.
Interesting.
Thank you.
But I mean, at this time, we're looking for two planning board members to be part of the committee, right?
Absolutely. And those are, I, I will say, the structure of this subcommittee, the, under the structure of this subcommittee, the planning board representatives will effectively be ex officio, so in the same capacity that Phil, rep, as a Select Board member, is present on the planning board by virtue of his membership on the Select Board and essentially represents the Select Board. These members will be actually appointed by the planning board, not appointed by the Select Board to the subcommittee.
So as ex officio members, is it going to be one of the three appointed members then by the Select Board who is going to be the chair of this committee?
No. So that, the structure would have the Select Board representative be the chair, and the, one of, one of the Select Board representatives chair the committee, since it is a subcommittee of the Select Board and the Planning Board, one of those two representatives would be the vice chair.
Vice chair.
Oh, interesting.
Makes sense. Is there a meeting deadline, frequency, and-
Yeah, so that is to be determined. That's ultimately going to be up to the Select Board as well. I think generally, these committees meet once a month. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the typical frequency. But during a busy season, when you have a big project, they might meet bimonthly. I mean, there's nothing, there, that was not established as a part of sort of the charter of the committee. I think that, I think the sense was, once we know, once we have a sense of who's interested, how many people are interested in the committee, we would create the, basically schedule a meeting.
I would, I would also add that, I mean, if there's sometimes, like a heavy lift, like the planning board with the HOP grant, you sometimes form a separate steering committee to say, you know, you guys are going to be meeting like every week and like digging way into this, because otherwise, like, everybody on the committee would just quit, because they couldn't do it. So sometimes for those heavier lifts, you might even want to form a, like a steering committee or something.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But that would be up to the board to work.
I have no idea with this, that, what you're talking about. I mean, what, is it, is another subcommittee of the planning board or something? Is that what it would be, or?
It's a subcommittee of the Select Board, but Select Board have members of the planning board and members of the, of the public?
Yep, members of the-
What's the, what's the concept of having it for, what's it, just for another-
Economic development.
Yep, promoting economic development. So that, that's a very broad term, so that could include things to promote business expansion in the community. And there are a lot of tools you can do to promote, tools you can use as a town to promote business development, but also thinking about how that relates to the master plan, how the town would like to see the community grow from an economic perspective, from a business perspective, whether there are tools that the town could use, or resources that the town could make available.
There are barriers.
It might go beyond typical planning, and it might get into tax policy. It might, you know, one of the topics might be like, you know, should we consider offering a, a five-year, you know, staged property tax increase for new businesses or something like-
Or a TIF district.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think-
It may, it may go beyond typical planning tools.
Absolutely. I totally, I totally agree. And I think, once you have a sense of where the business community, the public wants to go, I think this committee will be an important part of following through with some of the recommendations. And that could be, yeah, like you said, could be a TIF district, could be a ERZ, Economic Revitalization Zone, it could be a 162K revitalization district, or it could be subtle, you know, small changes to branding and marketing for the town, or infrastructure to support economic development in a specific area.
Or if there are a bunch of things that need to be coordinated that are not, that are not all land use directly related, like Franklin going to Whitewater route, or Plymouth maybe going with, you know, Tenney Mountain, and other things need to be coordinated outside of land use. It just provides oversight and coordination of those efforts.
I, I think, you know, the town of Plymouth could be, we could market ourselves as like the hub for outdoor recreation. Like, there's, there's mountain biking, there's skiing, there's hiking. Like, this can be like the-
What was the thing we adopted like 10 years ago?
Destination for environmental studies and-
No, 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 that was like 100 years ago.
Environmental Studies and Eco-Tourism.
That's the one.
Eco-Tourism.
Gateway to White Mountain is like 1850.
It was adopted by town meeting.
Yeah.
Who's interested in this Economic Development Committee?
I am.
I would be.
One, two, three, perfect.
Right.
Well, we need two, right?
We only need two, let's-
So you guys fight it out.
I'm happy to sit back.
Well, you, you, you're a Select Board member anyway.
I know, but it's a subcommittee of the Select Board, it's not going to be all the Select Board members.
No, but I mean, like, you wouldn't even be appointed by the planning board.
Good point. It has to be one of the six.
Yes.
True. Good point.
You could do it from the Select Board side. But yeah, but not from the planning board side. I don't know, do we need to decide tonight, or?
Yeah.
I'm glad we have three people on the show.
Candidates.
Three interested candidates.
So there, I mean, the Select Board did ask for, or at least the call that was put out to the community for members of the public, did ask for them to respond by the middle of next week. But the Select Board will probably not be discussing this at their July 28th meeting, but at their subsequent meeting, which is, I think, the 11th. So theoretically, of August, yeah. So I do believe that might leave another planning board meeting in between now and when they're going to sort of formally revisit this. But that, that could be subject to change. I don't, I don't set their agenda, but that's my understanding of the agendas that, that-
Your culture.
Relate to me.
Phil, what would you like to see? Would you like to see?
I, I think it'd be nice to have, have two nominees tonight, but at the same time with, with three interested parties. I mean, I, I also feel like I shouldn't be the one nominating people.
If we have some time, I could, I could put a long, I could put a long sign out and get ready for this.
Rock, paper, scissors? That's two out of three.
I don't know how we determine that. I think you all three of you are well qualified.
I, I think all three of you would be well qualified, and would all bring unique perspectives to the, the, the Economic Development Committee.
I served as industrial agent for the town for six years, and my, my first achievement was getting the first McDonald's in Plymouth.
Really?
That was tough, because Main Street was against it.
I bet they were.
Yeah.
Well, I would nominate Molly.
Oh.
And the two guys can fight it out.
I am.
Oh, okay. So there are actually four of you that are interested.
No, no, it was-
Three of us.
One, two, three.
Oh, I thought that was two.
I left my hand out. I, if no one was, if one hand went up, I would have been right there, but it, they weren't even-
So we really have like four candidates.
So you're busy enough with CIP?
Motion, second.
What's that?
You have the second for your motion, though, so that is a, that is a live motion.
Will we have a live or some?
I'm just going to let you two do it. I'm, I'm not going to.
You sure, Neil?
Yeah. So I've got, I'm on the, I'm on the Energy Commission and the Conservation Commission.
Oh, wow.
And the planning board.
You're busy, you're busy.
The Pemmy River Local Advisory Committee, and I think I'm still on the Lakes Region Planning Commission.
You are, yeah.
Neil, you have a lot to do.
Yeah, I got enough to do.
What's one more?
And you haven't been to the Lakes Region Planning Commission meeting.
Not lately.
No, I was looking at, because I, I read them. A friend of mine is on that as well, and so he comes in frequently, and we read them.
Phil Bolton is on the executive committee.
That makes me feel better, because you, you're doing a lot.
So I, I'll second Molly.
It's just, I really-
She's, she's already seconded.
Yeah, I was already-
Okay, all right.
I'm just really interested in, in seeing the town. I, I want to see the tax rate come down.
I agree.
Well, you, you-
We need commercial development.
We need increases in the value of property in town.
And I do think it's important-
Without increases in service, but I think, the, the trend is that services tend, residents tend to continue to demand more services, which is part of the, the numerator going up.
Let's not get, to get too deep into weeds, but yes.
Nonprofits.
Yeah, I'll be a vote.
So let's-
We have a motion in a second to nominate Molly.
Okay, I have no more discussion.
To the Economic Development Committee. There's no further discussion? All in favor?
I-
Do I vote for myself? Abstain.
Sure I do.
It's already done.
I'm abstaining.
You're off.
I'm abstaining.
No, no.
And you have to step down? You don't want to do it?
I thought John wanted to do it.
I'm happy to do it.
So we need a motion for John?
Make a motion for John.
I'll second it.
Brad seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, opposed, abstentions?
I didn't vote for myself. Okay, I'll, I'll say an aye.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you both for volunteering. I look forward to the, the good work that's going to come out of this, and hopefully the work that comes out of this committee will be the foundation for updates to the-
Master plan, yeah.
And beyond.
Yeah.
Chair, do we have any other business?
Do we have any updates from the Lakes Region Planning Commission?
No, we're, we had our annual meeting. I'm not sure if we have had a meeting since then, but we, we had our annual meeting, which is like a dinner, and awards are given out. And so we gave out lots of awards this year, with lots of nominees that were really good. And I was on the awards committee, and so we gave out a whole bunch of really interesting awards to interesting projects. And I'm not going to go through all of them right now, but, and otherwise, that's like, basically wraps this up for the summer, and we'll start meeting again in the fall.
Okay.
And, yeah, and so there's really not too much to report.
Well, here again from you, and follow the court to it. No public comments from online or in person, as there are no people from the public here?
I should probably just say one thing. CIP met today for the first time.
Yes, thank you.
And we just got together to go over the happenings and when everything was going to start beginning. And we just went over what's basically was passed from last year. And they've started the process, and we probably will get back together. They're going to give Joseph updates as they move along in the budget process, and he will keep me informed, and I will keep you guys informed, and we will meet probably the beginning of October.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or updates anyone needs to make us aware?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You guys better watch it.